Good evening, everybody. There we go. Welcome to the June 3rd Jackson Township Master Plan Subcommittee Hearing. This meeting is one of a series of meetings that we'll be having throughout the course of the next few weeks, along with the prior ones that we've had, to request public comment in all the areas of the master plan that we're going to be revising. Tonight is going to be the circulation plan element and the utility services plan element. Circulation plan element is kind of self-explanatory. It's one of the ones that everybody likes to talk about. It's traffic, it's circulation, it's transportation, trafficking of goods, consumer, and public. And for the most part, that's what a lot of people have been coming up and talking about. So tonight, we have not only Malvika Apte, our professional planner on the matter, we also have Kevin Chen, who's the traffic engineer for CMA, who's going to be putting some testimony on the record to explain exactly what's going to be going on. All right, so I'll leave it up to Ms. Malvika.
Good evening. So just like the last two public comment meetings that we had, tonight our focus is going to be the other two elements, the circulation plan and the utility plan element. Could I get the next slide, please? All right. This is generally an overview of what the presentation tonight is going to be. Next slide, please. So till now, we've discussed, you know, we talked about how some of the required elements are as per the municipal land use law. You have your goals and objectives, land use, your climate change, vulnerability assessment. These other elements are as per the municipal land use law optional elements. However, Township of Jackson, because they are doing a comprehensive update to their master plan, is taking into consideration reviewing all these additional elements. Last meeting, we discussed the housing plan element. Could we get the next slide, please? So this one, what we have remaining are the other five of them. Tonight, we are only talking about circulation utility. On June 17th, we'll be talking about the last presentation, which will be the parks, recreation, open space, the historic preservation, and the economic development. Again, this is the first meeting, like first public meetings where we are looking for ideas, we are looking for comments from the public on each of these elements. Next slide, please. So what is a circulation element? As Mr. Shea said, it has to do with the circulation network within your town. It's basically movement of freight, movement of people, movement of goods within your township. The circulation plan element is going to review all types of movement, whether it's through your roadway network, whether there is any public transportation, whether there is bikeway, roadway circulation, whether there is pedestrian circulation. So what that element requires us to do is review what is the roadway network within your township, what improvements happened since the last time your master plan was updated, what is it, what land users have changed around those roadway network, which is our, you know, how land use element will lend into this circulation element for us, and review based on the type of roadway network that exists. Now, Jackson is a unique town. It does have a vast network of county roadways. So what we'll have to do is take into that into consideration, have a dialogue with the county authority, roadway authority, to talk about, you know, what do they have plans for their roadway network within the township of Jackson. I believe one of those meetings, we will be conducting one-on-one from engineer to engineer to discuss, you know, what are their plans for the county roadway network improvement. The second is, we, another item that the land use law statute requires us to look at when we are looking at circulation element is, like all of you do probably know, there is a state statute on providing electric vehicle parking spaces throughout, you know, for any private development that happens. The similar, the state statute also wants you to look at your public areas where these electric vehicle charging station parking networks can be provided, and that will be included in part of the circulation element. I'm going to stop here to discuss circulation element. I am going to introduce my colleague, Mr. Kevin Chen, who is an expert in transportation and traffic engineering. He is going to talk a little bit about what he's going to review. I also want to bring up to you is these two easels that have maps on it, they kind of show just a preliminary, you know, roadway network. We've been able to download this data from the state and the federal highway network, the classification, and that's what it's showing. It's the preliminary review. It is not the, you know, the recommended plan as of yet. So Kevin, do you want to add a little bit? Thanks.
Sure, thank you. My name is Kevin Chen. I am the traffic, I'm a traffic engineer at CME Associates. Basically, with regards to the circulation plan element, what will, what will, what I'll be, what I'll be doing is, I'll be reviewing parts of the circulation plan in terms of intersections, roadway, roadways that need various improvements. So my previous experience all along the last 16 years at CME Associates, I've been doing intersection improvement projects, signing and striping projects, reviews of different applications, and basically, tonight, I'm here to take down your comments with regard to the traffic and transportation and all the other related subjects with regards to the circulation plan element. I'm interested in where are the traffic problems that you are experiencing? It should be noted that there's a little over, somewhere between 20 and 25% of the roadways in the township are under county jurisdiction. So those areas that are under county jurisdiction, we're going to need to have a discussion with the county with regards to the, what their plans are, what we'd like to see, what you, what you as the township would like to see happen, and go from there. But as of tonight, I'm, we're, I and the rest of the subcommittee here, we're interested in hearing what are the traffic transportation problems are you having, have you seen, have you experienced? Have you experienced, for example, traffic light that is not giving you enough green time? Have you experienced roadways where you have, like, let's say, several different shops along that you'd like to be able to walk to, but there's no, there's no pedestrian, there's no sidewalk? Have you experienced a large area where a bicycle, bicycle path would be desired and even encouraged, but there's, but there's no bicycle path, whether it be shared or adjacent to the roadway? Other traffic and transportations, like, does the intersection, does an intersection right now, does it need signalization? Does it need, does it need a stop sign? For other, for other areas in other developments, if you're trying, if you see a large amount of people crossing a roadway, do you need a crosswalk and/or other pedestrian crossing enhancements? Those are the type of, those and other subjects related to the circulation plan element. Those are the items that we are interested in hearing from you tonight. I believe I've captured everything else. Did I get anything?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. One quick thing I do, as Mr. Chen said, you know, if there are anybody out there, I know this meeting is televised also, so, you know, if somebody wasn't able to make it to the meeting and you have particular concerns of some intersection or some roadway network, please have those concerns shown on the ideas wall and, you know, posted there, because we are, we are monitoring that, we are reviewing that. We would like to know from you, your concerns of the township, because at the end of the day, this element and this master plan is going to be making the recommendations for seeing infrastructure improvements, land use improvements, zoning changes. Again, that, this will be the blueprint that will be kind of helping the policymakers of the township to see as to what's the area they want to change through zoning, through regulation, go through, go to county for infrastructure improvements, for grant requirements, because that, that's the blueprint that will provide the township's governing body, the planning board, to, you know, advise on any application that comes in, any approval that happens, any changes that happen. So again, for anybody who's watching and is not able to, or is going to watch later, please post your comments on the ideas wall, and I will share in the end, you know, we have the, the address, thank you, for that. Could we get the next slide, please? This next slide again also shows about the circulation map. You know, most of the yellow that you see, again, this is showing the federal highway classification. Again, in the element, we will have another map that will show which are the county roads, which are the road, local roads, and, you know, provide you the classification. So mostly this yellow and little bit of the pink that you can see on the prop, on this map is mostly county-owned roads. So again, any changes to make for that, we will have to go through county, the county is the deciding factors on what improvements can be made. However, with this, through this element, we can make those recommendations to the county, hey, this is a concern we've seen because of this, and so on and so forth, and that will help county almost, you know, review it and have some kind of blueprint for them to keep in mind. And of course, with the expertise of Mr. Chen, if you guys tell him of this particular intersection on this particular roadway network that is of concern to you, you know, he and his team will be studying that over the next couple of months and probably, you know, will be able to provide a professional background for the, for the recommendations for those improvements, and which is what the element would want, which is what the county would want, as to why, you know, we are asking for the infrastructure improvements that we are asking. So the next, next slide, please. The other part of the element, the other element that we want to briefly discuss is, we will be putting as part of this comprehensive master plan, is the utility service plan element. This is basically, you know, the land use law requires you to study your wastewater treatment areas, how that's served, how's the public water served. We do have a dialogue with the municipal utility authorities, you know, as to what their, how their infrastructure is, what's, what's happening, is it been, what are their recommendations for the future, how do they envision? And under that category, we'll be looking at the water supply and distribution, the sewerage and waste treatment plants, the solid waste disposal, and other such utilities. We'll also be consulting with your township engineer regarding the stormwater management plan if any suggestions or recommendations need to be made for that. Again, the master plan can be that document, can be that tool that provides the recommendation for your governing body, for your planning board, to, you know, provide the, to change that recommendation into an ordinance to make those improvements that will benefit, you know, the town for the health, prosperity, and well-being of the town. Next slide, please. And I think that I just wanted to provide you with an overview of what the two elements are going to be. This is the township website address where you can post, you know, again, your quick concerns, your quick ideas, and please, you know, if you still have ideas on land use plan element, on housing plan element, on goals and objectives, please, you can, you can put it in any time. Now, just don't think that, you know, because those presentations happened a couple of weeks back, you can no longer post those ideas. We are, I know Madam Chair is closely monitoring that, and she is making sure, you know, the ideas get posted and, you know, we, keeps us posted of any, any new comments that have come in. I think I've covered most, but please let me know if something else needs to be added. Thank you.
Just, just a one more thing, just to follow up on what Malvika was discussing before. The point of these meetings is entirely for the public. We don't have to do this, we don't have to be here. We're doing this entirely for the public's benefit. We want as much feedback on all these, all these locations that the public can possibly give us. Every intersection, anybody has any personal knowledge of any walking paths that they think they should be there, biking paths, crosswalks, anything. Any individualized personal knowledge given to us in any capacity by way of any method is more than acceptable to everybody up here, and that's the reason why we're here. So again, there's a sub-tab on the Jackson Township Planning Board website that is the master plan sub-tab, which is the wall that we keep on referring to and speaking to. It's a means by which, almost like a drop box, of letting us know what your personal recommendations are, what your personal experiences have been, and put as much detail as you possibly can, what zone, the streets, locations, as much detail as you can so that we have context for what you're talking about and where it is. And it's really just for your benefit. So whoever is here, we can start with public comment. Ms. Chairwoman, you have anything you want to? Yep. Good to see you again.
Nice to see you guys.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
As I know it.
All right. Please state your name, spell your last on the record.
Jim Silacchia, S.I.L.E.C.C.H.I.A., 6 Hartfield Drive. Before I really start, my first, since you brought it up, the whole concept of this meeting being for the public, and that you don't have to do it. One comment I'd like to make to you is, you have agreed to do it, so you should have really considered the public's need to be here instead of just the people that are on the dais, which is what you said last week. You did not say, we looked at, you know, it was not that people aren't available, it was you guys weren't. This is the best time for you guys. It wasn't, it was the best time for the residents. And what you just said now was, this is for the residents. Those two don't mesh. That's just my comment on that. Now, I'll go back to, I'm probably going to go over to five minutes, so I'll probably do two, if you let me. I'll do parking now, I'll do my, the second topic later. First two words I'm going to use, and not only for parking, but for everything in this, common sense. That's what everybody needs to look at when they're building this thing. What do I mean by that? Is, there was a resident at one of the last ones that came up and said, make sure you look at some of the other master plans of other towns and see what worked and what didn't work. So my thought process was, okay, well, we have a town right next to us that right now is experiencing massive traffic jams. I'm not going to get into why or what, but let's look at that town. That town has four state highways, Parkway, Route 9, Route 70, and Route 88, all going through the majority of that town. Okay? So having businesses in that environment makes sense because you have all the major highways. Jackson Township has one state highway, and it runs for, I don't know, I'm going to guess seven miles on the northern tip of the township, and that's it. And if you bring up the map, you can see, because I think you clearly showed it on your circulation map. So when you, when you're looking at, not just the traffic flow, but even the businesses that are coming before you guys now, they're going to add to the traffic flow. And I know we hear it every meeting, you can't look at overall traffic when you're looking at one application. But now, let's look at all the traffic that we're going to be dealing with, and this town is seeing it, okay? I left my house at 3:30 today, so I can go out to the high school to watch the baseball game, which is a championship game, which is probably why there's not more people here tonight. Again, timing of the meeting. I turned off of New Prospect onto Bennett's Mills, and I have never seen Bennett's Mills Road backed up that far, okay? It literally went past Romeo's Plaza, I don't know, probably another 10th mile down. 3:30 in the afternoon. It's not even rush hour, maybe school hour, I get that, but that's a significant piece. That's not the only road. There are many other roads. You go down Hope Chapel, okay? Hope Chapel is a disaster. You know, we have to, before, before we start building all of these warehouses, and I'm looking at the meeting on, the agenda on the meeting tonight, is three different contractor warehouses, or two contractor warehouses, and maybe a full warehouse. You'll hear me talk at that meeting, because I have my thoughts there, but I won't bring them up. But that's all going to bring in traffic, okay? And these roads are not designed. The roads in Jackson were designed, how many years ago? When we were a farmland. That's the reality of it. So before we start building, and we made this mistake, okay, and we're paying for it, that we did not consider all the roadwork that needed to be done before we started seeing all this development, you know, that's going on. And, and this master plan can't stop what's already in, in play here. So we have some significant problems that we're going to have to deal with, because trying to fix roads after the fact just makes it worse. Trying to, trying to widen the road, when you're going to, how are you going to widen it? You have traffic jams now. What are you going to do? How do you? New Prospect Road, here's my perfect example. You want a, you want a road that I want to complain about? In May of 2022, a press release out of the mayor's office listed six roadways that were planned for paving. And on the list was New Prospect Road. And I get it, New Prospect Road is a county road, so the county has control. The press release stated that these, these projects would all be completed by the spring of 2023. It is now June of 2024, New Prospect Road hasn't been touched. And yes, I heard, well, there's more to, they're now looking to widen it and so forth. Problem is, by the time they figure out how to widen it and start doing it, the potholes on that road are going to be immense. I can tell you, I live three houses off of New Prospect Road, okay? If a truck is going down New Prospect Road and hits, there's a, there's a pretty decent size, I don't know if it's a divot or just a dip in the road, but as they hit it, okay, my house shakes, and I'm three houses in. So we, we have to do better. We're going to have bigger vehicles on, on these roads with all these, you know, with all this warehouse that you're putting up. You know, I, and I get it, we built, we said we're going to put our industrial park out on Whitesville Road. I don't know, Whitesville Road is a two-lane highway, and where, where we were thinking about that makes no sense. And I get it, it's not this board, it's been previous boards, but that's what I'm saying. Nobody uses common sense when they're looking at things. Everybody goes to, well, what are we going to do if we're sued? And the reality is, if you're sued, that's fine, go in with a common sense approach to the lawsuit, and, and let the courts decide the true facts in this case. So New Prospect Road is a major part for me. I can tell you, you know, if you want to go, you want to meet Whitesville Road with everything that's being built is, is an issue. Which move time do I have? Oh, you don't even have a clock up.
There are so few here we could.
Oh, okay, all right. So then I, so, so, so I need, I, well, I said, should I come back for the utility piece and give them a chance, or do you want to hear it now? All right. So let's talk about the utility piece for a little bit. And Mr. Shea, you and I have had this conversation about my situation, okay? My family moved into the house that I'm living in today in 1974, okay? And between our house and the house behind us, there used to be a creek that ran all And between our house and the house behind us, there used to be a creek that ran all the way down to Harfield Park. At some point in the late seventies, one of the homeowners went to the town, and the town, for some reason, said, yeah, that's your property, you can do whatever you want. And he started, he fills it in, and he gets all his neighbors to start filling it in. Since that day, if we have some bad rain, we have water problems. And it's because the drainage area that was built to help us, the town overlooked and let it, and let it get filled in. So we still deal with it. Yes, I, I've, I've learned, as I've gotten older and over the years, what I need. You know, I started out going, okay, well, first time it happened, I got to replace my entire downstairs. Second time after the first one, okay, now I got to go out and get a generator. You know, now that, you know, really can't run a generator in the rain, so got to be careful where you're running it. So the only other option is a home gen, home, a full, a home, home generator. And those are not cheap. So I don't have that yet, but that's my next step, if I go that route. So looking at the drainage that's in this town is horrendous. And, you know, I get the public works tries to keep the drainages clean, they're never clean. You watch these rainstorms we've had over the last couple of years, that there's water all over the place. You go down Farmandale Road after a heavy rainstorm, and there's a guy on there that, that has a swimming pool in his front yard. And it gets to a point where it's halfway out in the road, and someone is, when it happens, puts cones out to make sure everybody is aware of it. So we need to do a better job on the drainage in this town, especially as we're building. As we build more and more, there's less place for the water to go, so it's going to find, it's going to look to find, to go somewhere. So those are the things that we need to seriously take into consideration, even looking at all the applications. And I get it, I get the courts have ruled, and you got to, you can't do this and that. But, you know, this is a point in time where we have to really figure out how to do this the right way. Because if you don't, if you don't, all you're going to do is, you're going to have a, something's going to happen in this town that's not going to be very nice. And unfortunately, you know, three days ago, or four days ago, we had a reminder of that, is that these roads are not designed for the traffic volumes that we have. And as the vehicles are getting larger, the lanes aren't getting larger, so all it takes is one little tweak at a wheel for someone to go out, you know, five, less than five feet, and you're in trouble. Because there's no place for, if a person's coming the opposite way. I can tell you, I've, today alone, I had it happen to me twice. We have a delivery truck parked on the side of the road, and people come in where the delivery truck is. They don't look to see if anybody's coming the other way, they just go out into the other lane because they got to get around the delivery truck. I get it. You can't, you can't fix stupidity on people. That's just, you know, I get it, you know? But those are the things that you have to understand that are happening, and say, what are the best things that we can do to help the residents? So I'll leave it at that. Have a good night.
Good evening, Board. Ryan Archer, A.R.C.H.E.R.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. I'm just going to move this a little bit further away. What's your, what's your address?
Four eighty-six Frank Applegate Road.
Laurie, have it.
I'm sorry.
Four eighty-six Frank Applegate Road.
I'd like to start by extending my deepest prayers and thoughts to the family members who passed away this past weekend, a mother and daughter, or son, whoever it was. My deepest apologies for that, and I pray for that family immensely. I want to thank the professionals who have given their thoughts and professional opinion on everything. A couple of questions for you. Regarding the growth rate, what do you, what basis of population in ten years are you expecting to be in the township from the sixty thousand that are here now? What, what do you, what projected number are you using?
So in all honesty, we're not ready for a quiz. So this is pretty much just a forum for the public to be able to come out.
I'm just trying to understand the basis. I mean, I, I know it's going to expand, and that's just common knowledge that, you don't stop, I'm sorry.
These are things we are looking into, and this is what the professionals are doing. They, they will be making these types of studies and from the township, the county, and they'll be included in the report.
Yeah, understood.
As we go along.
Yeah, it's just, I know it's a complicated issue because we're such a rural area, and we're going to see an influx of population, I mean, it's unavoidable, and I'm just trying to understand how you're projecting the.
It's not, it's not easy.
No, it's not easy.
When we moved here, when I moved here in nineteen seventy, the New York Times Magazine section called Jackson Township the fastest growing town in the fastest growing county in the United States. That was in nineteen seventy, and you know what that did that? The Brookwoods. When the Brookwoods were built, and people were up in arms because the farmlands were disappearing, and Mr. Schmerz was building buildings faster than, and selling them faster than hotcakes. So it's very difficult to predict what changes are going to take place in a township when something like that happens. Of course, one of the things that these boards do is we try to look at that type of building, but there are things out of our control as far as some of those changes that are occurring on. So that's part of what the professionals will be doing. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. How many residents are currently living in this town? I, I said the approximate number, is that fair enough? Sixty thousand? Give or take ten thousand, I mean, I'm just going to rough.
In nineteen seventy, there were twenty-two thousand, and now there are between sixty and seventy thousand.
Can you please state how many residents are currently in this room? If you could just tell me.
Well, of course, they're about ten.
Yeah, what's the number?
They're about ten.
If that, correct?
And, and remember, we also have people online.
Understood.
And I did discover, and I was pleased to hear it, that many people are watching these proceedings at their leisure.
That's good then, that's good to hear. Because I was going to say, it's a little embarrassing to have, I don't even know what percentage that would be, six to sixty thousand, it's, you can't even formulate that number, so I would be a little embarrassed that we don't have more of a outcome at these important meetings that you're holding.
Everyone on this board, except our professionals, are residents. We're all residents here as well, so, you know, you can count us.
Sure.
We, we are, are volunteers, trying to help the township move in a positive direction.
Understood, understood. So I had brought up a document last week, which you're aware of, the general amendment to the master plan. I had, you guys tested some of the objectives, and I didn't realize that the professionals came back and said that those objectives could change at some point, but the basis of the objective seemed pretty reasonable to me, and I just wanted an understanding of how those objectives could possibly change.
So.
I mean, I can repeat them again if you like, I don't know if you recall the three objectives that I made? Do you remember that, or?
I do have my notes, I can pull it up, or if you want to repeat.
Yeah, so the objectives were, and I apologize for delay, I'll take my eyeglasses off. And this one was underlined, to provide for limited non-resident development in residential zones while protecting the existing character of neighborhoods. Why would that objective possibly change?
So we didn't, I believe I, the way I made the statement is, we are looking at all the goals and objectives. We are not changing all of them. We are changing some of them, again, depending on, you know, those goals were written in two thousand nine. In twenty twenty-four.
Well, these are, these are actually.
So what, what, what you have, what you have, number one, is product of litigation.
It is post-litigation, sir, isn't it?
Okay, so, so that's number one. Number two, that is not, what you have in your hand is not a product of anything that the master plan subcommittee is looking into.
Understood.
Nothing that the planner has looked into or done.
Okay.
Their, their product is not even finished yet.
Understood.
The whole point of the hearings was to have public comment first before.
Yeah.
These guys even really started, you know, digging into, to what we were doing. We wanted as much feedback as possible to take it all in, and then, and then start making kind of informed decisions based upon the feedback that we're getting from the public. So what you have is, is kind of.
It's the results of a consent order, though, isn't it?
Byproduct of litigation, number one, and number two, it's, it's going to be subject to change based upon what the master plan subcommittee, you know, may be doing.
Okay.
So we just, that's just not going to be released until the final hearing.
No, understood. As you know, I can't speak to the planning board during a regular meeting.
Right.
Right, correct. And that's kind of the reason why I'm mixing in this and this document in there.
But what, what, what you, what you can do is that, that is a, that's a type of document that you can take to a township council meeting.
Exactly.
Which I have.
Right.
Yes, and you might be aware of, I'm not sure if you are.
They have, they have the proper jurisdiction to really kind of elaborate on it, where we really don't.
I, I understand that. So I won't ask any questions specifically. I do like to make a statement, though.
Okay.
Okay. So in the original complaint, the planning board was labeled as defendant in this case. I don't need you to respond, from what I, I read. I believe the mayor is a part of the planning board, if I'm not mistaken, that's what it says.
I believe he is a designee.
He's a designee.
Okay, so somehow he's.
He sends a designee.
Okay. So, I mean, do you, do you deny the fact that it, you guys were a defendant? Not you, but the board were labeled in, in, as defendant?
Please, please remember that the, the membership on this board has changed.
Absolutely.
Almost a hundred percent.
Absolutely, and I understand that.
Since the litigation.
I understand that, President, I do.
So, so just so that you understand, that the board is not the same board.
I absolutely understand.
That it was.
And I'm not accusing any officials of any wrongdoing, volunteers of any wrongdoing by any means.
I'm just trying to help people understand.
Yes.
When they, when you talk about the board, the board is the body, the members change.
Complicated. I, I agree, very complicated. So, yeah, this platform might not be the right platform, and I understand that, so I will refrain.
No, it's fine.
No, no, and I don't want to make anybody feel uncomfortable.
Be, no, no, not at all.
Yeah.
This is, this is where you can say this to a certain degree, but the appropriate place, I try to go to the township council meetings, the zoning board meetings, as well as be here, because they all interconnect.
Understood.
We can only listen to testimony usually.
I know that.
At a planning board meeting.
Correct.
We don't listen to public comments. The place to go for public comments.
Which I.
Is the planning board meeting.
Absolutely. The town council.
No, township council.
The township council. And also, remember, that there are, is a county, there are county groups that you can make certain statements to, for instance, on circulation. There, there is a place that I encourage residents here to go, to speak about the county road system.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just questioning, actually, the validity of the consent order at this time, and not for you guys. So it's, it's for the town council, and I appreciate that. So the number of increase of residents is unknown at this time, because it's, it's so hard to narrow down. But how do you fairly, how do you fairly engineer an infrastructure, a municipal facility, based on the unknown, and, and be fair with that ten-year plan? How do you, how could you possibly estimate that? Because it could be anything. I mean, and, and like I said, I understand progress, and I accept progress. I mean, it's inevitable, but, but how do you properly prepare for that, especially when you don't have control of twenty-five percent of the roads? And that's a problem here with it, and it's not a problem just because, I know it's, it's just, it's coming up, so how is that, how is that even feasible to create a master plan of this extraordinary change? Because the ones before that, you know, the township hit a huge growth rate, when was that? In the eighties, nineties?
Seventies.
Seventies?
Seventies.
And then the nineties again, I'm assuming, right?
Then again in the nineties.
Yep. And, but, but then it, all of a sudden, it kind of stopped, right?
Well, approximately, according to some reports and statistics, large changes come about every twenty years. And, and here we are, in twenty twenty-four, we have had ten years of another huge change. So it, it's not possible to predict, but I think professionals can explain how we go about the process.
Okay.
So, very little background, I mean, my question is, there are a lot of elements coming in, you know, impact of the, what do you feel about that?
Oh, sorry.
I can hear you now.
I'll repeat that. So as I said before, we are studying a lot of these elements in tandem, and that's one of the reasons why. Land use element is that element where we review your existing zoning, your existing land use plan, which is basically, you know, we look at every parcel in this town and what land use category it currently is in, your zoning district. And as part of our climate assessment, which was another element I spoke about, we'll prepare a build-out analysis as to if tomorrow, the entire town was going to get built out based on the zoning that it currently exists, not predicting, you know, any kind of major use variances, or which have, which are, you know, as Madam Chair said, out of control if something, you know, does get approved. But we create a build-out analysis to see what would happen if the entire town tomorrow got built out. We will take into consideration the environmental areas that can never get built out, you know, there are wetlands or what have you on pine lands area. So we'll create a build-out analysis. We will also, based on, you know, the zoning board reports, the planning board reviews or applications that have happened, study, you know, where has this changes happened? Now that changes, like, say supposing it was along the highway, which is, and please don't quote, like, I'm hypothetically kind of giving you examples.
No, understood, it's all hypothetical, understood.
We see, you know, suddenly there's blob of red. Why I say red is, in land use element, we always associate commercial with red, you know, color on the land use plan. If we see a blob of red, and that area is currently zoned residential, and if seventy percent of that area has already been approved for commercial, maybe it's time township looks at that being converted. If that's getting converted, how is that impacting your circulation network? We'll be working in tandem with Mr. Chen to discuss, hey, you know, this is the roadway that, you know, is ultimately, I think, going to become the commercial corridor. What do you propose should happen? Hearing your ideas of, you know, already the gentleman before you did give us some road names which are of concern. Mr. Chen and his team will be looking at those roadways, and if one of those roadways are in that, maybe it's time to make recommendations to change those, you know.
Unfortunately, most of our roadways are intersected by county roads, and, and that's where you send back the original issue of dealing with the county.
Yeah.
And it's a problem.
And also, like, I know, I know part of the reason is, yes, it's county-controlled, you know, roadways. But what county is actually looking with the, you know, actually having a dialogue with Township of Jackson. They're saying, you know, we, we are ready to work with you in updating your infrastructure, but what we want you to look is, first, at your master plan, because that wasn't updated since two thousand nine. Where are you even going to begin to tell us where you need the infrastructure? So that is the first step. They want us to study these roads, they want us to make these recommendations, and they're ready to come to the table. We actually are, as part of our research, going to have a county, you know, engineer-to-engineer dialogue on, you know.
Interactive partnership.
What is it that they have planned? And does that coincide with whatever recommendations we are making? So that's how, that's why it's very important, when you do a comprehensive master plan, you look at every element. Now, the next, on seventeenth, we are going to talk about your open space, your historic. Obviously, those are the areas you do want to preserve. You don't want to see any development, you know, you want to preserve your open space system, you want to preserve your historic areas. So then, you know, is that going through, you know, is there a major roadway network there? If there is, how do we protect that area? That's, that element going to help, help, you know, township and its policymaking decide that. So that's how it'll all interplay and decide.
Understood. So, go ahead.
Also, may I mention that our, our professionals, CME, this is not their first rodeo.
No, I understand that. They're professionals. I'm familiar, I'm in construction, so I'm familiar with some of the names and some of the agencies, so.
They have done master plans for other communities. So I think Jim asked, reading other master plans. I've read five other master plans, now they're like this big. I've read five other master plans from two townships that are very similar to ours, one township that is dissimilar to ours, and a township that just finished their master plan up in North Jersey where I, in a town I used to live in. So there's, there's a lot of interplay here, and, and the professionals, I'm not a professional.
Sure.
With this, with the professionals.
It's a big task, it's a huge task.
It's a big, it's a huge task, but we're spending the time and the effort to do this on.
We have to do it right, you got one shot at it, right? I mean, this is, this is your 10-year shot, so.
We're not doing it blind, and we have very good advice from these professionals. So, it's been, it's been a real eye-opener, I think, for the rest of the board and for me.
Last question.
Last question.
So, why was R3 zoning originally introduced into the, into the township? What was the function of that, and, and purpose of it?
I don't have the history of that. With that being said, that.
How about an idea what it means? I don't know, I don't know, that's why I'm asking you. It's not, I'm not trying to attack you.
I'm not Mr. Bresi.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand it right now.
So, so, a couple of things, just so you get the, the correct answer with that.
Correct.
All right.
And if you direct me to the right appropriate party.
Probably something that you had to live through, right? Which Mr. Bresi is smiling in the background. So, you want to contact Ernie Peters, all right? He is the.
Actually, I've been, I've been in touch with Ernie already. We haven't spoke yet, but we've been voicemails each other.
He's from RVE.
And he's actually the author of this document.
Right, so, so he, he would have the factual histories to exactly why that transpired.
Okay.
He's, he's the planning board planner, and he's, I believe, is also the township planner.
Okay, to me, I would assume that prevent overgrowth, environmental balance, I mean, I have a lot of things.
It was probably, it probably had something to do with, because, I mean, don't forget, there's,
Litigation.
There's multiple layers to residential zones, so sometimes townships go all the way from like R1 to R10, right?
Absolutely.
So, for them to expand one type, one segment of it, meant that there had to be some kind of demand for a certain aspect that was contained within it.
Litigation. Litigation drove a great deal of that document, and then there are.
Litigation to create R3 zoning, you're saying?
Litigation.
Possibly? Okay, I'm trying to understand it, that's why I'm trying.
Not that section.
Okay, okay.
But that document that you.
No, I understand, listen, I, I'm well-versed on the, on the whole history of this situation, so.
And remember that we have, we have a lot of overlay zones here. We have areas that have one zoning, but then there's an overlay zone on top of it.
Well, that overlay recently was a result of litigation.
Exactly.
Exactly, and, and so.
So I know Mr. Bresi will, will come up.
So if you want to have a conversation with Mr. Bresi afterwards.
I think he can tell you, he's, he's forgotten more than most of us know.
Here's my concern, here's my concern. So, when someone moves into a town, a neighborhood, and I apologize for the reverb, they look at a lot of aspects of that town and neighborhood, correct? I'm, I'm assuming that schools, twadia life, you know, spacing of homes, size of homes, all reflects their decision. And, so let's take it for instance, as myself. I moved on a county road, okay? I moved with an open piece of woods across the street from my house. When I moved into that house, I took inherent risks, I took two of them, right? I took the risk that eventually that road would have more traffic on it, and I took the risk that a development would eventually be built across the street from my house. And if that happened, I really have no complaint about that. That would be like me moving next to the turnpike, and then they wanted to widen the turnpike and 10, 10 more feet of my property, and I try to complain about that, I have no leg to stand on. I have neighbors that are in cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, they took no inherent risk. They were protected under R3 zoning, the neighborhood was fully developed, the size of the homes are relative to their income, and they're relative to each other. And I believe that they build homes relative in size in a neighborhood, so that people don't feel unwelcome, or, or outnumbered, not outnumbered, but financially inept to the person with a, with a bigger house in that development. So, when they buy that, they're under the presumption that they're protected by the township. Open parcels of land for a zoning overlay, I can understand that. There's a potential for a variance, there's a potential for a change.
Here's, here's, I, I get where you're going with this, but here's the problem. The problem is that the township doesn't have the legal right to supersede the municipal land use law. So, so what happens is that technically, in, in any zone, any zone can be rezoned. Now, what happens is that your use in that zone, that approval doesn't go away. That just becomes a, a, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming use at that point. So your use stays, and, and I, listen, I, I bump into my private practice, I bump into this situation all the time. And residential goes to commercial, commercial goes to residential, residential goes to multi-use, multi-use goes to industrial. It, it happens all the time, all over the state, right? So.
For neighborhoods that are existing, that are fully developed?
So, so, all the time. And what happens is that the nature of the area sometimes just changes over time, right? There's actually a, a ton of case law on this, right? And what happens is that because of the nature, let's say over the course of 20, 30 years, the, the, the nature of the neighborhood changes. And, and I'm not talking about anything religious, I'm not talking about anything.
No, of course, no, we're talking just evolution.
It, it could go from residential to small business, or a small business to industrial. I mean, all, all it takes is sometimes five use variances to, for the nature of a neighborhood to change entirely, and then, and then 10 years after that, when they look at a, a master plan, you look at it and sometimes say, hey, listen, the entire nature of the neighborhood has now radically changed, does it make more sense to have it this way as opposed to that way? And then your use would just become a, a pre-existing, you know, non-conforming use. So, it's, that happens all the time, and, and townships have actually tried to do what you're saying, and they've actually gotten kicked in the teeth by the state, because they can't supersede the municipal land use law. And, and that's kind of, it's a nature of the beast in.
Okay, well, I, I, I understand, and I appreciate the response.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm happy to have you speak as long as you'd like, but.
No, I'm not looking to be up here a long time, we have a meeting following this, so.
I'd just like to know how many other people would like to address questions.
I'm done, I appreciate your time, and have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do, I'm Michelle Wary, 751 Heisen Road, Jackson, a county road.
How do you spell your last name?
W-H-A-R-Y, and it is a county road.
Gotcha.
I'll just start with that. Are these ideas on the idea wall, public to all, to see? Okay, and do you know how many are actually attending these virtual meetings?
Well, it depends, there were, I think last time there were 50-something. I'm not sure about this evening so far, but as, as was pointed out, there's a big game today, so one never knows. However, people, you can watch this at any time. You can just go on the township website and pull it up and watch the recording of it. So, it's not like this is a one-shot deal, it's, it's up there for you to see at another time at your convenience.
Well, as Mr. Archer Prior to me mentioned, there are approximately 12 residents in the room now, and up to 70,000 residents in town, it's a pretty crazy ratio, for something so, you know, extensively important. Private utility effects with the whole utility service aspect, I'm completely private. I have a well, I have septic, and I have a furnace, underground oil tank. How are all those utilities going to be affected by the utility portion of this?
So, again, we're not, it's, we're going to study, your municipal utility authority does have a ratio of how many are on private and how many is public. What this element is going to do is going to study that, how is it working? Is there, you know, municipal utility authority would be the best judge to tell us, you know, how much they plan for the future. How much they, I'm sorry?
They have no control over me.
Yeah, they, they're not looking to control or anything. What I'm saying is, they will just have a record of what's private and how much is public. They are going to provide whether, how their wastewater needs for the future, because they also have to prepare their own plan, you know, be it a five-year plan, be it a 10-year plan. They are also utility authority, they are also professionals who have to kind of envision. They have to know whether, how that's serving the town or not serving the town. There is also a state area called the sewer service area, where the state has decided, you know, how much of Jackson should be in public sewer area. And, again, depending on what the, whether it's adequate, whether in future they're looking to increase it, whether there would be any potential of increasing the sewer service area, all that would have to be studied. And the document will just make recommendations, whether that goes into play, because there are a lot of other public agencies that have to come into interplay, whenever it comes to. You have the Ocean County Utility Authorities that have to come into the picture. There's the Municipal Utility Authority, the State DEB, which is the one who regulates the sewer service area, has to come into play if ever an extension is proposed. Again, the, the element is going to study what exists, what is coming for the future, whether it's adequate, whether there is a need to look at the infrastructure expansion, and that would be the recommendations of the element.
I'm just wondering the impact of private, you know, private services.
Well, one of the, one of the impacts, and this board frequently looks at the homes in an area where something is proposed to be built, and how many people in that area are on septic, for instance, wells and septic. So we, we are concerned about that all the time. There are those in the township who would like to see expansion of water and sewer areas, because that has a direct effect on growth of businesses, for instance. And those are ratables, and those are things that people are looking to have come into the town. Entertainment, restaurants, entertainment facilities, those things cannot be built, many of them, unless there is city water, city sewer systems. So, everyone is affected by these things, and we, we understand that, but that's part of what we're planning about, that's why we're looking. And we know that a, a large number of people here are on well and septic, and we keep that in mind all the time when we're, and people like you are coming and saying, how is this going to affect my well? How is this going to affect my septic system? So, that's part of our planning.
Heisen Road, I believe, has a drainage issue, especially with, you know, some of the recent building. Heisen Road has a drainage issue, I believe, which you guys should be aware of.
Lots of roads have drainage issues.
So that's number six, number seven.
How do you spell Heisen Road?
H-Y-S-O-N. How are the changes in the land use and zoning use? You mentioned that they're going to be looking at making changes to a lot of the laws or the whatever's on the books for land use and zoning use?
So, are you saying that have there been any state law changes, or?
I guess how are we going to be notified of it? You know, do we have impact, you know, any kind of impact on it?
So.
Sorry, if I can.
So, as part of that, like we said, this is just the first step. Once we do this study, there are recommendations made, again, per the land use law, we are, the board, the planning board altogether, not just the committee, has to have a public hearing. And in that public hearing, whatever recommendations are to be made are discussed before the public. So you will be notified. The master plan is a recommendation document, it's not instantly going to change, if there is changing of zoning districts recommended. The master plan is almost making an, a, a recommendation list for the town council. Ordinance adoption, ordinance, making it into a law is all part of the governing body. The governing body, once gets the master plan from the planning board, then it can choose to whether to implement the recommendations that are made in the master plan or not. If they choose to implement the recommendations, which is what we are hoping to achieve in the master plan, it will have to go through its own requirement. There have to be two readings, it has to be public notice, it will be sent back to the planning board to see if it complies with what the master plan, is it consistent with the master plan that they adopted? And then go ahead and become an ordinance and followed by the law, that, that's what would happen. So the master plan would just make the recommendations.
Thank you. Last thought is, I see it every 25 years, the change, maybe not as frequent as 20, but certainly 25. So let's get ready for 2045 next. I'm tired of hearing climate change, because I have no idea why that's a big thing. And lastly, I think some of the, what the, the usage of the area from, what did you say? Partially commercial to, from residence to partial commercial, has already happened with some of the businesses and people that do businesses that are living in the neighborhoods now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And who are you?
Thank you, Mr. Bresi.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name, spell your last with the right hand.
Kenneth J. Bresi, 462 Diamond Road.
You sure know how to spell that, Laura.
The one question about the R3s, I'm not speaking as an expert or anything else, just by memory, which could be weak after 40 years on land use boards. The R3s were originally put in to keep the rural nature of the town and stuff like that. We could not do like Mount Laurel and be, you know, create a co-op act or what they created with affordable housing. The one thing I did want to come up on is the Municipal Utilities Authority. On the 208s that you're referring to, that's a complex issue. It goes from the township, to planning board, council, to the local MUA. They got to take it to the county, they cannot present it to the state, and the county has to present it to the state. It's very complex, one of the most complex things, their little master plan, their 208, is complex. I have a concern that should be addressed, though, but we've had an application in front of the planning board a while back, where a applicant who was capable of hooking up to water, sewer service, was denied because of capacity limits. So, I think that has to be addressed, besides the 208, why are we having capacity limits? Is it the county OCUA or that the MUA? That has to be addressed if that's going to keep occurring. And the R3, that, while they were kept in the last master plan, some were reduced. All the R3s were not in the sewer service plan, and because of nitrate in the ground, we decided to keep them R3s. That was in the last master plan. So some were converted to R2s that had sewer service to them, the rest remained R3s. And the other thing I think the public has to recognize, and I'm, I'm speaking now as a planning member, as a resident, and this committee for the master plan is doing their job diligently, and I can say that because I've watched it for 40 years. But, they have to understand, no matter what you do on a master plan, a certain percentage of that gets changed at the zoning board. So, if you have a perfect master plan, maybe 20, 25% will change at the zoning board. And people have to realize, that's where it's very important, that the zoning board has more capabilities of demanding stuff that the planning board does not have, and I, I think that can be explained. And, another issue, gentleman brought up, roads, I'm not going to argue with that, I agree with him totally. Nobody can say enough about the roads. But he brought up something very important, parking. I'm not mentioning towns, but other towns in the area have had problems with the roadways. And if you look at their history, on all their approvals and their parking, it wasn't required or enforced. When you don't enforce parking or allow for enough parking demand, an example, you have to do affordable housing project. Who knows, you might go to duplexes, I have no idea. If you do that, you're going to have to increase the parking requirements that you can, but you have the RSIS to contend with. So which overrules, that's, that's another issue that had to be looked at with the parking. I definitely agree with that. And as far as common sense, there's a lot we would all like to do, but the one thing I would disagree with the gentleman with, don't let the courts rule, they don't rule on common sense. They take the letter of the law, and that's it, and they wipe out the common sense. The other thing, when we get sued by applicants for turning them down, and we have an applicant say, well, we'll give you 25-foot of extra buffer, we'll give an extra entrance here, we'll do that, and you turn them down, when they get to the appeal at the courts, all that stuff they're going to do extra goes away, and the court looks at their original application, and I think the public has to know that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bresi. Anyone else would like to speak, so we can put things on the record? And if you're not interested in speaking, we are more than happy to hear from you on the website. There has been some comment about the website limiting what can be said. We believe in a philosophy of an economy of words. Lengthy, lengthy postings are, are not of use to us. We're interested in specific streets, specific neighborhoods, specific intersections, and that can be done in a very short post. If you'd like to post five times, that's fine, but they should be specific, not general. Generalizations we can all make, but we're looking for your specific input, so that we can place those specifics within our documents. Anyone else would like to speak? Jim? You're sworn in.
Yeah, we already swore in.
So I, I listened to Mr. Bresi, and he reminded me of some other roadways that kind of clicked. The reason it clicked with me is he made reference to parking, and, you know, earlier this year, the town council introduced an ordinance for 100-foot parking.
Limiting parking.
Right, and they also brought out the state statute of, state statute. And they also brought out the state statute of, state statute, I think it's 39 or 34, I forget which number it is. And I looked at it, and I said, "Wow, if I go by this parking statute, the parking in front of my house disappears because I basically go in, I'm up against the T."
You're three houses in.
I'm three houses in, but I'm on a T.
That's right, you're against the T.
I'm a T, so I lose all my parking. They've introduced the ordinance, obviously no, they have not changed, nobody's enforcing it now because I can look out my window on a weekend and see in my road alone, probably 10 violations. If I drive through my development, I probably see upwards of 30.
I beg to differ. I believe they are enforcing. Maybe not on your street, but there is enforcement.
I can only tell you what I see.
And oftentimes, it may be based on the particular amount of traffic that that, that streets, those streets may have, or the width of the roads on those streets, and if there were parking on both sides of the roads or within 50 feet of the end. So there's more, there's more to it than your neighborhood.
Also, there's your point. So you may want to reach out to the specific traffic department within the, within the police department that is designed for that. So you want to contact Officer Hembah?
To me, it's their role to know it. They've created the ordinance.
But I'm just saying that if you... That may be one avenue to put them on notice and say, "Hey, listen, this is a bad area," you know?
I've actually thought about, you know, let me get a ticket and take it to court and see if the ordinance that was put in is truly a legitimate ordinance or not. So for a specific roadway, kind of you're talking about parking on both sides of the road, road being too narrow. If you take a ride down Neal Street on a weekend, okay? Neal, N-E-A-L. It's off of Susan Drive. If you go down Susan Drive, make a... Right, and it's a curve. And they are parked on both sides of the road, and people have to go down the middle. Well, the problem with that is if you're coming one way, you can't see the other person coming the other way. You get people, okay, who's going to move? And then you got to back up. So there's roads like that. And there's roads all throughout the developments, not, you know, Harfield. I'll say Feser Run, but nobody probably knows, understands Feser Run because it's a part of Harfield. But the Brookwoods are the same way. They're all narrow, they're all old developments, as you said, 1974. It was the Brookwoods. My parents lived in, we lived in Brooklyn, New York, and the Daily News, I still have it. Brookwood One, come live in a community...
1968.
Yeah, well, we moved in '74, so I still have what they looked at. And they ended up not buying air, they found the house in Harfield, and that's where we are. But there are roads, and the parking, the parking is getting very crazy in this town. The other thing that I want to bring up, and I've brought it up before, as we develop future developments, especially the warehouse type things, or, you know, I use the schools on Chandler are another issue, is having a one-way, or one-road access into multiple areas, multiple items that, you know, businesses or schools, it's just dangerous. You know, you look at, you know, what's one of the latest schools that we built in this town?
And to that point, so what happens with that is that that has to be a creature of ordinance. So unless the ordinance...
I get it.
Yeah, I just, just to be clear on that.
And I brought it up to the town council, and the mayor was there, and he looked at me, and he agreed, but, you know, we'll see. You know, because I look at, I started looking at some of the schools that are in the town, and I said, "Well, you know, by me, you have two grade schools. You have Crawford, Rodriguez, and Johnson." Geez, I can't remember the school I went to. And, you know, you can get into it from Marson Road, but you can also go through Camp Joy and come up around. So there's multiple accesses. Elm's Elementary School, it's a one-way, but it's at least 100 yards different. So if there's an accident one, then you can always get everybody out the other. So I think that needs to be taken into account when we're taking these applications, you know, for multiple schools, or we're going to put in warehouses, and all they want is a single entrance in and out. You know, if you have 100, you know, 250 square foot warehouse, how many employees are going to be in there at any one time? Well, if that road, for some reason, is incapacitated, how, you know, how do we get these people out? So I think we need to really look at, and I don't mean housing developments. If you want to build a one-road and have houses on both sides, I get that, they exist. I know we're creating a new one over on Brewers Bridge. So I get that. But those are the types of things, when you're looking at from a traffic standpoint, those are the things that I think really need to be fully vetted and make sure we do it properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have five more minutes of public comment because we have to get ready for the regular meeting. Mr. President?
As the gentleman stated, about one-way in and out, this board's done a pretty good job at really confining that. But for everybody's edification, years ago, there's one person in this room that might remember it, Mr. Cleat. There was something we put in effect with the length of a cul-de-sac or one-way, however much it could be, to restrict that from happening. And that's been overruled by RSIS and everything else. So that's something that to look at again. We did have it in place, I don't know how many years ago, but a long time ago. And it is a very good concern, and this planning board addressed that so many times with widening it, back way in or something like that. We just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call, if anyone else would like to speak. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion for a pause. Second? All in favor, I would agree. Have a nice evening. Thank you very much for taking the time to come.
Have a good one.
All right, everybody. Welcome to the June 3rd Jackson Township Planning Board meeting. This meeting is being convened in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of New Jersey, and all adequate notice has been provided in all the proper forms. Madam Chairman?
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Brezzi.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mr. Riker. Ms. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Marzo.
Here.
Mr. Chmer.
Here.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
And approval of the minutes for May 20th, please. Roll call. Oh, motion first.
Motion Bernstein.
Second, Sullivan.
Okay. Mr. Brezzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Chmer.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Camp.
Yes. Engineering and planning matters, gentlemen?
Nothing about that, Chair.
Thank you. Legal matters?
Not at this time.
Resolution. Resolution 2024-21.
Okay. Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final site plan approval with design waivers for private girls secondary school for Shalva High School, Inc., Block 23001, Lot 15. Eligible to vote are Mr. Brezzi, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Heller, Ms. Rose, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Chmer, Mr. Wall, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Camp.
Motion, please.
Motion Bernstein.
Second, Brezzi.
Resolution 2024-22.
Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval, an amendment for technical revisions to the drainage system for Hal Realty Associates, LLC, Block 7403, Lot 2. Eligible to vote are Mr. Brezzi, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Heller, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Chmer, Mr. Wall, and Dr. Camp.
Motion, please.
Motion Bernstein.
Second, Heller.
And resolution 2024-23.
We have to vote. We have to vote on 22.
We didn't vote on the first. Do you want to vote on the first one? Yeah. Okay, so for 2024-21.
We voted on that one.
No, you didn't.
I think we need to vote on 22.
We didn't. We didn't vote.
Okay, let's vote on them one at a time. 2021.
Okay, so 21, Mr. Brezzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Chmer.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Camp.
Yes. And we'll go back to vote on the payment for a voucher for Recording Secretary. All except a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call, please?
We don't need a roll call. You just need an "aye."
Just, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Good try.
Changes in schedule. Uh, Block 6501, Lot 4, 2.02 My Address, LLC, carry from June 17th, 2024 to September 9th, uh, 2024, with notice required.
Motion to move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Master Plan Report, please.
Good evening. From 5:00 PM to 6:15 PM this evening, the Master Plan Subcommittee held a public hearing to discuss the circulation plan and utility service plan elements for the master plan. The Subcommittee strongly encourages our residents to put ideas and suggestions on the ideas wall. The Subcommittee is also seeking information on any areas or roads that you believe need attention. This next Subcommittee public hearing will be held on June 17th at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that takes care of everything. Okay. All right. Um, first, application is Block 101, Lot 3, ECD, New York, Inc.
No.
No, not yet.
It's not on. That always gives us problems.
It's on the bottom.
Yeah.
Is this better?
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. For the record, my name's Lisa John-Bosta. I'm with the law firm Keiza Shahinian and Jantumasi on behalf of the applicant. The application that's before you this evening is for preliminary and final site plan approval in order for the applicant ECD NYC, Inc., to construct a contractor's office, garage, warehouse, and shop on property located at 21 Allison Road designated as Block 101, Lot 3 on the tax maps. The site is proposed to be owner occupied with the applicant's business. ECD is the largest foundation contractor in the New York City metropolitan area presently based out of New York. ECD purchased the subject property with the intention of expanding its physical footprint. The application that's before you this evening is fully conforming, except for parking variance that was identified in your professionals' reports and a few minor design waivers. To discuss the eve-- to discuss the application this evening, we intend to call one or two possible witnesses, Josh Sewald, who's going to be testifying in the capacity as civil engineer, as well as professional planner. We also have Corey Chase, our traffic engineer, who's also available to testify if the board has any questions. So if it's okay with Madam Chair, I ask that our first witness be sworn in.
Uh, first, we're gonna hear some testimony from our professionals.
Sure.
Um, thank you, Mr. Shea. Um, applicant summarized the application nicely. Fifty-seven thousand square foot mixed-use building, fifty-two, um, two thousand is warehouse, and forty-eight hundred square feet is, um, office space. Um, the project is compliant. Um, my most, uh, my concerns, and I would think the applicant needs to address is the parking variance that, um, was mentioned, also confirmation of the bulk standards. There's outdoor bulk standards that are proposed with this, um, site, so some testimony regarding compliance with those, um, those standards. Um, the road improvements to the, um, adjacent roadway system, curb and sidewalks required, um, and we have some curb at the driveway connection to Allison. Um, and lastly, um, I think there's been, might have been some environmental issues on this application. I see, um, restored wetland areas. That kind of tells me that it might have been filled, and they're working with DEP to, um, get that violation, if there was a violation issue. So just some testimony as far as the environmental concerns. That's all for now.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our office has a report dated May 29th of this year. Properties in the HC zone where contractor's office, showroom, garage, warehouse, and shop are permitted uses, provided all materials and equipment restored completely within an enclosed building. Um, we'd like to hear some testimony, either from the owner, the architect, someone about what's going on on the site. Um, when we hear Jackson Planning Board think of contractor office buildings, we think of twenty thousand square foot buildings broken up into two thousand square foot units, and there's ten of them. This is a fifty-seven thousand square foot owner occupied. So I think while on paper it meets the requirements of the ordinance and the zone, I think there needs to be some testimony to say what it is, and almost more importantly, say what it's not going to be. That it's not going to be subdivided and used as a warehouse for other tenants. Um, that being said, Mr. Cle started talking about Allison Road improvements. Um, doesn't appear to be any. We need to get some testimony as to what, if any, improvements are going to be along the property frontage of Allison, as well as the county highway. And I did note, although our report went out late, so I didn't have an opportunity to review it with the applicant's traffic consultant, um, that they had been in contact with municipal professionals regarding other projects in the area, and they didn't take into account the project across the street, um, that was approved in the last, I don't know, eighteen months or so. Um, so we probably need to at least review that. But for opening comments, that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to address some of those comments, uh, as of this Friday, we received an LOI from the, uh, from DEP, and also we can affirmably state that this will not be subdivided, and it will only be applicant occupied, which is the owner. So to steal a little bit of Josh's thunder there, but if we can get him sworn in, and then we'll hit on all those points.
And that's, that's a condition of approval, correct?
Yes.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last to the record.
Certainly. Josh Sewald, S.E.W.A.L.D.
All right, and your credentials?
Um, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, as well as a Master of Science in Civil Engineering. I testified before over a hundred land use boards, and I was here in April a couple of months ago.
You look familiar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea.
And Josh, your license with respect to civil engineering and professional planning, are they current?
Yes.
I ask they be accepted as both?
Welcome to Jackson.
Testifying is both an engineer and a professional planner, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And the board accepts your credentials?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just to quickly run through some of the existing conditions, identify the site for the board and the public up on the screen before you. Uh, this is our aerial map exhibit, part of the civil drawings that were provided and prepared for the board. This is the satellite image overlaid onto your zoning map. As you can see, located to plan, uh, west, where we have Monmouth Road. That is actually the municipal boundary between your community and Millstone. The property is identified in a yellow boundary. The dotted yellow line around it is approximately the two-hundred-foot property owner's list. As, uh, Lisa mentioned, the property is at approximately ten acres in size. We have frontage on the county roadway, and to the north of us is Allison Road. We are along the HC Highway Corridor, um, zoning district, up and down on the north and south to us. As you just heard from your board planner, there was a project approved across the street from Allison Road for another warehouse-style building. To the rear of us is, uh, another HC Zone property that is located to the east, and then beyond that is our residential neighbors. So as you can see from the existing site today, there is a residential dwelling located on Allison Road, and just some low-line gravel areas of the prior use before the applicant ECD, New York, decided to purchase the property, and that's where they're housing some of their features today. So overall, again, the property has about ten acres in size, frontage on two roadways. There is an existing residential home on there today, which is an existing non-conforming condition, um, and there are wetlands spread throughout the property, about two and a half acres in size. And as you heard a few moments ago from Lisa, we do have a valid LOI. We literally just received it on, uh, Friday before the weekend broke.
Do we need to mark what's shown, um, in the exhibit?
Yeah, if we can give it an exhibit number, yeah.
All right, so A1 for?
Aerial map exhibit.
Yeah.
one oh one, lot three on the tax maps. The site is proposed to be owner occupied with the applicant's business. ECD is the largest foundation contractor in the New York City metropolitan area, area presently based out of New York. ECD purchased the subject property with the intention of expanding its physical footprint. The application that's before you this evening is fully conforming, uh, except for parking variance that was identified in your professionals' reports and a few minor design waivers. To discuss the eve, to discuss the application this evening, we intend to call one or two possible witnesses, Josh Seewald, who's going to be testifying in the capacity as civil engineer as well as professional planner. We also have Corey Chase, our traffic engineer, who's also available to testify if the board has any questions. So if it's okay with Madam Chair, I ask that our first witness be sworn in.
Uh, first, we're gonna hear some testimony from our professionals.
Sure.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Shea. Um, applicant, um, summarize the application nicely, fifty-seven thousand square foot mixed-use, um, uh, building, fifty-two, um, two thousand is warehouse and forty-eight hundred square feet is, um, office space. Um, the project is compliant. Um, um, my most, uh, my concerns, and I would think the applicant needs to address is the parking of variance that, um, uh, was mentioned. Also can confirmation of the bulk standards, there's outdoor bulk standards, um, that are proposed with this, um, site, so some testimony regarding compliance with those, um, those standards. Um, the road improvements to the, um, adjacent roadway system, curb and sidewalks, uh, required, um, and we have some, um, curb at the driveway connection to Allison. And lastly, um, I do, I think there's been, might have been some environmental issues on this application. I see, um, the, uh, um, restored wetland areas, that kind of tells me that it might have been filled, and they're working with DEP to, um, get that violation, if there was a violation issue. So just some testimony as far as the environmental concerns. That's all for now.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our office has a report dated May twenty-ninth of this year. Properties in the HC zone where contractor's office, showroom, garage, warehouse, and shop are permitted juices, provided all materials and equipment are stored completely within an enclosed building. We'd like to hear some testimony, either from the owner, the architect, someone about what's going on on the site. When we hear Jackson Planning Board think of contractor office buildings, we think of twenty thousand square foot buildings broken up into two thousand square foot units, and there's ten of them. This is a fifty-seven thousand square foot owner occupied. So I, I think while on paper it meets the requirements of the ordinance and the zone, I think there needs to be some testimony to say what it is, and almost more importantly, say what it's not going to be. That it's not going to be subdivided and used as a warehouse for other tenants. That being said, Mr. Cle started talking about Allison Road improvements. Doesn't appear to be any, we need to get some testimony as to what, if any, improvements are going to be along the property frontage of Allison as well as the county highway. And I did note, although our report went out late, so I didn't have an opportunity to review it with the applicant's traffic consultant, um, that they had been in contact with, um, municipal professionals regarding other projects in the area, and they didn't take into account the project across the street, um, that was approved in the last, I don't know, eighteen months or so. So we probably need to at least review that. But for opening comments, that's all I have at this point, thank you.
Thank you.
And to, uh, address some of those comments, uh, as of this Friday, we received an LOI from the, from DEP, and also we can affirmably state that this will not be subdivided, and it will only be a, a applicant occupied, which is the owner. So to steal a little bit of Josh's thunder there, but if we can get him sworn in, and then we'll hit on all those points.
And that's, that's a condition of approval, correct?
Yes.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last of the record.
Certainly, Josh Seewald, S.E.W.A.L.D.
All right, and your credentials?
Um, bachelor's of science in civil engineering, as well as a master's of science in civil engineering. I testified before over a hundred land use boards, and I was here in April a couple of months ago.
You look familiar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea.
Josh, your license with respect to civil engineering and professional planning, are they current?
Yes.
I ask they be accepted as both?
Welcome to Jackson.
Testifying is both an engineer and a professional planner, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And the board accepts your credentials?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to quickly run through some of the existing conditions, identify the site for the board and the public up on the screen before you. Uh, this is our aerial map exhibit, part of the civil drawings that were provided and pre, uh, prepared for the board. This is the satellite image overlaid onto your zoning map. As you can see, located to plan, uh, west, where we have Monmouth Road. That is actually the municipal boundary between your community and Millstone. The property is identified in a yellow boundary, the dotted yellow line around it is approximately the two-hundred-foot property owner's list. As, uh, Lisa mentioned, the property is at approximately ten acres in size. We have frontage on the county roadway, and to the north of us is Allison Road. We are along the HC Highway Corridor, um, zoning district, up and down on the north and south to us. As you just heard from your board planner, there was a project approved across the street from Allison Road for another, uh, warehouse-style building. To the rear of us is, uh, another HC Zone property that is located to the east, and then beyond that is our, uh, residential neighbors. So as you can see from the existing site today, there is a residential dwelling located on Allison Road, and just some low-line gravel areas of the prior use before the applicant, ECD, New York, decided to purchase the property, and that's where they're, uh, housing some of their features today. So overall, again, the property has about ten acres in size, frontage on two roadways. There is an existing residential home on there today, which is an existing nonconforming condition. And there are wetlands spread throughout the property, about two and a half acres in size. And as you heard a few moments ago from Lisa, we do have a valid LOI. We literally just received it on, uh, Friday before the weekend broke.
Do we need to mark what's shown, um, as an exhibit?
Yeah, i- if we can give it an exhibit number, yeah.
All right, so A1 for?
Aerial map exhibit.
And then, Josh, if you go through, can we just mark them?
Certainly. And the next exhibit, um, it'll be the site plan rendering.
Of that A2?
That's perfect, yeah, we can mark that as A2. This is the, uh, site plan sheet overlaid onto the landscape plan, and then colored for presentation purposes. Same orientation as the exhibit you were just mentioning. Allison Road is located to the top of the plan, running in the east-west direction. Monmouth Road is located to the, uh, west left side of the plan. The orange block will be the fifty-seven thousand square foot and change contractor, uh, warehouse. All of the gray areas around it will be asphalt pavement, access aisles and parking, and everything else that you see on site in the color of green is either existing trees, wetlands, or stormwater, future stormwater management and new landscaping associated with the project. Overall, as you heard, uh, from the introductions, the, the proposed use is a permitted, uh, use within the zone, that's why we're here before you this evening at the planning board. Uh, what is nice about working on this application is we got to work hand-in-hand with the owner of the property, who is also going to be the operator of the property. Many times I'm presenting before you and other boards, it is a speculative development, and all those concerns that come along with speculative are things that we have to work through the evening. We have operations testimony, number of employees, hours that we'll be utilizing, and because they will be the only applicant inside of this building, that's why it's a very custom layout. As you see with maybe some other warehouses, you see a large truck court, dock doors, and some other features, this is a very custom building, so I do not believe it could ever be re-subdivided to, towards that flex warehouse-style development that the board has been familiar with the past.
That's a stipulation.
Yes.
That the applicant's willing to make, correct?
Happy to do so.
I have one question, but, uh, your aerial shot that you showed us, when was that taken?
Is that against her?
The aerial that you showed us?
The aerial, yes.
When?
Beginning of twenty twenty-four per, uh, Google Aerial Maps.
Thank you.
No problem.
And one, uh, stipulation for the sake of the neighbors, uh, left turn only out of the facility?
Yes, we saw that in the police memo, and we're happy to agree with that.
Thank you.
So overall, just to describe the, the facility, as well as the overall site plan layout, we have our, uh, driveway located on Allison Road. As we just stipulated, we will restrict to left-turn movements out, so that all of our traffic will go back out to Monmouth Road. You'll see towards the northern side of the building, we have thirty-eight parking spaces. That is more than enough of what our current, uh, applicant owner is looking to provide. They will have approximately twenty employees on site. They are putting in thirty-eight because they believe of the future success of their building, and they're kind of future-proofing the facility. You do see a large accessway, two-way aisle that wraps along the front of the building, and then heads towards the, uh, kind of the outdoor storage and the overall lay-down area. If you've been to the site or have been near there, you'll see a few different products associated with the fact that they are a pile company. So there's different steel caissons and other things necessary to help build foundations underneath of a building in the urban areas. Those facilities will be brought inside of the building. So the access aisle on the western side that runs parallel with Monmouth Road, you'll see two doors there. That's so that the tractor-trailer or the lowboy can go into the building and bring in material, or bring out the new caissons that will be going to the job site. So a lot of these features will be located inside of the building. After they do their work inside of the building, there may be some extra storage or time between jobs that they land, that those products may be stored outside on that, uh, pavement area.
Excuse me, for how long?
It depends on the season, ma'am, as well as the number of jobs that they land. You'll see that-
But not permanent storage outside?
Certainly not permanent storage.
What? So, and, and just to be, just to be clear, I, I think the, the zone requires a contractor warehouse, that all storage has to be inside.
That is correct. And then there is a separate section that allows outdoor bulk storage. So the, so the components associated with contractor, shop, warehouse, everything will be inside of the building.
As, as long as it's associated with the-
Yeah, Madam Chair? If, if we're gonna dive into this, let's just, let's take it slow, let's read the ordinance, let's make sure they stay at the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay? The use section of the ordinance, chapter two forty-four, fifty-seven, A10, it's on page four of our report, is what the permitted juices are. So this is a permitted juice, provided that all materials and equipment are stored within a completely enclosed building, period. Next paragraph, two forty-four, fifty-seven, B1, bulk storage is a permitted accessory use. They're either gonna need to prove to us that they have a permitted principal use, or this use isn't permitted in this zone. It's not for the board to figure out, it's clear, the applicant needs to make that case to you, to show that they're complying with the ordinance. The, we're gonna do it a little bit, it's unenforceable. Okay, anyone who's sitting here has been in Jackson Township and looked at a construction site, it's unenforceable. And worse, if they ever sell the property, the next group of people has, don't know nothing about it. So let's just make sure we're clear as to what we're being asked to approve, and make sure you guys agree to what it is that they're asking for. I don't take exception to what they're asking for, I just don't know if it fits the ordinance' black-and-white comments yet. Thank you.
So testimony to that?
Certainly, and typically when you see bulk products, you don't see a paved parking lot with landscape islands, and then you don't have, uh, full concrete curbing around it. You typically have just an open gravel lot and kind of a endless use of the parcel. And then you have various different tenants that are doing different businesses. We are here to testify and condition potentially any approval on what this applicant and operator needs, because they are not leasing this building out, they have no intention on selling it, they purchased this thing, this will be location number two in their company. This is a very important strategic site for them. We can go through the materials that they utilize, but their equipment, any fabrication of their materials, everything will be done inside of this building. That's why we were confident in working with the team, the attorney, and the traffic engineer, to ensure that anything that will be outside will comply with your bulk storage standards. Again, if you've been to the site, you will see that there are those circular drum-looking items. Those are essentially caissons or pile-type facilities that go into the ground underneath the building. That is what will be outside, all of the other vehicles, and material that need to be a part of this process will be inside of the building. Again, their facility in Congress is a fourth of the size. The reason that they are looking to do this and submitted the application is because they are getting a fifty thousand square foot building that they can house everything inside. Additionally, and final testimony about this to address some of the concerns, this building is drive-through capable. The trucks come in off the western side, they go through the facility, and they exit towards the eastern side. That's to ensure that those larger build, those larger trucks and equipment that's on it will s- be stored inside overnight of that building. The other areas is for nu- maneuverability and laydown of bulk stores, not bulk product. They don't have gravel yards or dirt piles, it is truly so that their pieces of metal can be laid down, and then be switched in and out, and then stored inside the building when it's done. Happy to answer any other further questions or comments associated with this.
I think you've covered most of it, but to be clear, to talk more about the operational aspects of it, this is a three-story building, and there's an office component to it as well, is that correct?
Correct, that the contractor shop is one-story, and then the office component is three-story, so essentially two mezzanines on top of the ground floor that will house the administrative offices, the bathrooms, and the other executive spaces for the employees inside.
And any raw materials, the, the steel that they're using, uh, et cetera, that's, that's enclosed within the building itself, and any equipment that's necessary to put things together for, for their, for their jobs and for their products, that's all occurring within the building itself, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, I, as far as the outside of the building and the outdoor storage, uh, there are conditions related to the accessory use, and would the applicant be able to satisfy those conditions set forth within the code?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, just to talk about the outside, what is going to be occurring outside, there's gonna be business vehicles that are gonna be parked in the rear of the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I think you've covered this already, but what if anything, as far as, what if anything else besides the business vehicles would be outside of the building at any given point?
It, it's really the, we'll call it the, uh, steel forms that are being transferred between jobs, or that were custom-sized for the project. So again, if you, if you've been to the site at all, it just looks like a steel drum, that will be stored outside, but the, that is the only component that will be outside. The reason for the, uh, pavement area is for maneuverability of that large vehicle and the equipment that needs to come in and out of the building.
How, how many, uh, vehicles will be parked outside?
Great question. So we will have twenty employees on site, they will park in the thirty-eight, uh, spaced parking lot, and then we have approximately six tractor-trailers that will come in and out at peak time. Some days will only be one or two, but on a busy season during construction, you're looking at six tractor-trailers coming in and out of the facility.
Are there any parked there overnight?
If they are, they will be inside of the building.
Okay, that was what we were looking for, the parking, uh, situation. Do you have an architect who's going to testify tonight?
But I will be essentially your architect to discuss the materials of the building. We provided a few renderings and exhibits that are, uh, with the board right now.
We didn't get any renderings or-
We will introduce them as exhibits tonight.
Be nice to get them in advance so we could look at them.
Understood. I think, hopefully you'll be pleased with them when you, you take a look.
I'm, I'm concerned about the neighbors being pleased with them, and the people who have to pull in and out of that street every day, being pleased with them.
So th- those are architectural renderings that you're gonna be submitting into the record?
Yes.
Okay, um, but you don't have an architect?
We don't, it's, it's now a state architect from Georgia, so, um, we can, Josh or, you know, the, the-
I mean, Josh, Josh really can't, because he's, he's a professional engineer, professional, uh, planner.
Understood. So either Josh or the applicant can testify as a fact witness as to the proposed materials of the building if necessary.
Fact witness would be fine.
Sure.
Purely from a, a planning standpoint, you'll see surely it is a concrete box building, and you'll see the floor plan associated with it, with windows at the office location. From a planning standpoint, we believe that it complies with all of your code sections of, of a building. If there are any specific questions, we're, we're happy to answer them.
Were there, um, uh, signage issues at all? Do we have any signage issues?
The applicant has not submitted for any signage, and it's because they are not a retail-type use. They are a business that does not need to be identified, and they honestly don't wish to be identified, they want to be behind-
People will know where they're going.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good, fine, thank you.
Maybe if you, we can flip to the architectural rendering? Unless you wanna stick with the-
No, that's fine, let's roll with the, with the board's comments. There, there should be on that USB drive, a couple of architectural exhibits. Uh, I would do one, it has all of them on, uh, exhibit one. I'm sorry. Maybe the second one? There we go. Thank you.
We can identify this and mark that as A3?
So these are various 3D perspectives of the building. Uh, you'll see it matches the exact shape and size located on the site plan exhibits that you just saw. At the corner, you'll have various window treatments associated with the office building. As I mentioned, it is a three-story mezzanine, and then the rest of the building will be associated with that contractor, uh, storage warehouse. It is going to be a concrete wall building, like this board is certainly familiar with, most likely precast or tilted up. There will be HVAC units located on top of the roof, and there will be the two doors located on the front and the rear, and that again is so that the operation could drive their trucks through the facility. A very custom building for a unique tenant and operator.
Has there been any consideration given to solar?
I knew that question was coming, Madam Chair. The, the applicant would like to condition and say that, yes, we would be happy to do solar, assuming the local electric purveyor will be willing to accept the solar that will be coming into it. So I know the state passed an ordinance that said a hundred thousand square feet or more, you have to have it. They're certainly looking into it from just a good clean energy and, and a cost savings, honestly, but sometimes the local infrastructure can't accept it, and they, uh, hold back how much solar they can do. So what we'd be happy to say is, yes, we'll condition it on how much the local electric provider can put on the building.
Thank you.
Certainly.
And Josh, the orientation of the glass transparency, that's towards the Allison Road frontage? Yes.
And towards the driveway. So Allison Road as well as Monmouth Road.
There appears there will be plenty of screening, however.
I, I believe, and if you want to flip back to exhibit A2, that there is adequate screening. Uh, if you drive past the site, you really can't see into it.
I was there today, so it's pretty deep.
It is, and we're not modifying any of those areas, if anything, we're adding landscaping. Um, if the board professionals have any future requests or concerns, we can certainly talk about that, but you'll see some of the lighter colors are all the new trees that are coming in. Uh, we're not expanding any further into the wetlands, of course, we have to leave that alone. Um, and we are removing the, the residential dwelling that is also on Allison. So overall, I would say that is almost a shrink in development, but we are modernizing stormer management, onsite utilities, pavement, lighting, parking, landscaping, it'll look like a brand-new facility. I think it's screened pretty well, because our neighbors across Allison is gonna be a commercial development, and then to the south is highway commercial. The only residential zone which you can see in the southeast corner, that's where the zone line is, that is significantly buffered by existing trees and wetlands that will be, uh, preserved based on the wetlands LOI that we obtained.
I, I think the consideration is the, um, roadway that the residents will be traveling down, um, will, will have plenty of buffering.
I, I believe so. You'll, you'll see a little bit at the corner, just for, at the intersection of Allison and Monmouth, you will be able to see down the driveway, of course, for line of sight, but all the other frontages will have existing vegetation or new vegetation.
Mr. Bresi?
Yeah, I have a question. Did you look at the, uh, right-hand corner there, that ramp? It looks like the building's right into the woods. Is there, is there a way, is there flow through there that can get around the building? Or is that, why is that for the building?
Um, so there is not full circulation around that back corner of the building. You can get to all sides of the building, it just doesn't connect. Couple reasons. So, so the truck has access to all four sides, just the road doesn't connect, and that's okay, because the tractor-trailers we have on site have worse articulating movements than the fire truck, so I know that the biggest vehicle on site can maneuver here, the fire truck will have even better access along all three sides.
But it's not always about maneuverability, it's about positioning and strategic attack. But has the fire department even looked at the approved plans?
They have, and they've given a review letter with a couple of comments that we'd be happy to comply with every one of them.
Okay, 'cause I don't have it, so I didn't get to see it.
It was issued back in January, but we can comply with all the recommendations of our department.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it, what we've been doing lately is, you have to give us three-hundred-and-sixty-degree access for safety reasons. You know, some have been doing pavers or, or whatever, you know, whatever type of surface that can support a, a vehicle. You can't pick and choose where an emergency is gonna happen.
So we, we can shift the trees a little bit. Um, part of the history of the property is that there was, before my client owned it, the prior owner did some illegal filling of wetlands. So part of this redevelopment project-
God, we were waiting for that.
They wouldn't, they would never.
Um, part of this redevelopment was first going to the DEP and working out mitigation and restoration, which is associated with this. So it's a unique internal development area, and that's because of the wetlands first. I'm confident in saying that although we don't have full circulation around, that your fire truck apparatus can gain access to all sides of the building, and every request that they made, we, we will comply with. Um, there, there's enough clearance to, for a firefighter to be able to run around the building, I just don't know if I have enough clearance near the wetlands to run a grass-paved drive aisle. But I'm, I'm confident with the review letter we received from the fire department that we can satisfy with the plan that's currently shown on the board.
Listen, I'm all for keeping every tree that we can.
Yeah.
I hate that they clear-cut, you know, and if we have to make an adjustment, we will, to, to compromise, but access is important.[1716.81]
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And how tall is this building? Because I'm thinking of fire trucks and accessibility. It's a three-story building.
Say that second part? I was just looking up the exact building. It conforms to the 35 feet. Just point at the elevations.
So all our apparatus could reach that?
Present, present apparatus is good then. Thank you.
No problem. So the applicant's willing to comply with all fire official recommendations? Absolutely.
Few other items that we didn't touch on. Do you want to touch on lighting briefly?
Uh, certainly. So we have 30-foot-tall mounted light poles throughout the property. I believe one of the comments from your professionals was that the illumination was a little light at the intersection. The thought of that, seeking the design waiver, was because it was a residential street that went to the back. But if there was a request from the board, we can certainly illuminate a little bit more, whatever the board would prefer.
What are your operating hours?
I was going to get to that.
Sure.
That may affect lighting, is, that was my point.
Uh, our lighting is generally on about an hour before and on an hour after we close. And our hours of operation are Monday to Friday, 5:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Saturday occasionally, depending on the season, from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Sunday, we're, we're never open.
So there are no evening hours, no expectation to be...
No, ma'am.
That may be a help. Thank you.
No, ma'am.
Josh, do you want to discuss, you said a maximum of 20 employees that's both within the warehouse and within the office building itself?
That's correct.
So the parking that we're proposing, I think it was around 38 parking spaces for, for regular vehicles that would be sufficient to satisfy the needs of the operation itself?
Very much so. Almost double per what the actual operator and client needs.
And I'm sure traffic is a concern in, for the township. Can you discuss how the business vehicles, when they would approximately be leaving and returning to the site and how many that would be?
Certainly. One, one of the nice parts of, of this specific use and, and application is that we're working with the operator and owner directly. So as you heard, it's 20 people max coming into the site with only six trucks coming in and out a day. So they'll be doing their work during the hours of operation that I just testified to. So it's not like there's a double dip of traffic. People come to the site to work in the warehouse or in the office, will use their vehicle. The other ones using their trucks will take the truck out of the warehouse, go to the job site, and then come back and pick up their car and leave. So yes, the extra spaces are for future proofing and hopefully more success within, uh, the community. And that's why we're providing an additional 18 more spaces.
And the trucks...
What we're looking at here, however, is not just your, uh, use at this time, but we have to constantly consider the future. One never knows, so we want to make certain that there's enough parking for the building itself, no matter what the use may be in the future.
So, great question. It'll be my closing as the planner for the evening. How the only variance I believe that we have, and it might even be a design waiver. I'll defer to your professionals on which one they want to choose. Um, based on separating out office square footage and warehouse square footage, there should be approximately 59 parking spaces. The applicant, as you heard, you testified through, they only need 20. We're showing 38. Should a future tenant come in and they decide to sell. There is plenty of asphalt pavement around this building that you can stripe out and then get compliant with the parking that Jackson needs. Again, it is my professional testimony that ITE does not need the double dip of office and warehouse, but to future-proof it, you certainly have the land. And you'll hear later with better planning alternatives in the C2 variance that less impervious coverage is a good thing for a property. So overall, you have the room to expand to get up to 59. That will not increase any more development coverage on the site. And then overall, this specific user who we're conditioning the site plan on will only need the 38 spaces.
So do we consider that banking at the, or can we at this stage?
So the stormwater management is already designed to accommodate the total development. Could you have an alternative Phase II plan that the board professionals will be satisfied with to show the extra spaces? I'd be happy to do that, only with the potential condition that that's not how the operator's going to use the site currently.
That sounds like a plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board?
Um, as far as the delivery schedule goes, is that going to be consistent with the 5:00 AM to 3:00 PM? Or are you planning on having later deliveries?
No, so any operation on the site will stay within the hours of operation. And when I say 5:00 AM, that's when the first employee comes to the site. That, that tractor-trailer's not leaving at 5:01. They have to load it up. They have to put things on it. But it could be 5:30, 5:45.
And then what type of, um, trucks will you have there?
Two types, either a tractor-trailer or a lowboy. That's the one that sits really low on the ground so equipment can get on top of it. It's the same length and articulating movement, but it's large enough to be able to get in and out of the building. And sometimes, you know, a smaller box truck, whatever they need for the job site. But we always design for the largest vehicle and that'll be those big tractor-trailers.
Anything else from the board?
Madam Chair? Just a, a suggestion. I see board members sort of quizzical about the hours of operation. Our ordinance doesn't specifically have an hour of operation standard. It does have a noise standard. So the hours of operation are as testified. We hope they be good neighbors and they're subject to the noise ordinance.
Absolutely. We understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Marza?
Sorry, just to reiterate, so you're going to agree to, um, the off-site condition that the traffic safety unit proposed, which is just the left-hand turn?
Yes.
And how will you, how do you plan on enforcing that?
Uh, two ways, my recommendation. The radius coming out of the exit driveway will be very shortened and kind of made perpendicular so that if anyone wanted to make the right, you'd be really hopping the curb and messing up your car. And also then with adequate on, um, with a sign that says "left turn only", as well as a striped, uh, arrow that says. So they have three ways, uh, to enforce Allison Road.
Anyone else from the board?
Madam Chair? Going to Mr. Tremor, as far as the access around the whole building. Um, the minimum required is 60. You have it 110. Is there anything to be gained by slotting the building closer to Monmouth Road and be able to get to the back of the building complete, completely around?
We can certainly look at that. Um, what we were trying to honestly do, Mr. Cle, is keep as much of that existing buffer as possible so that you didn't see this contractor warehouse up on the road. Uh, if it truly was a concern of the board, I think I have enough real estate to angle the building, kind of rotate it towards the southern property line and then get in a 15-to-20-foot access aisle.
But you had already indicated that you'll comply with whatever, whatever the fire people, it would say.
I did, yes, Mr. Cle.
Um, the road improvements to Allison and Monmouth?
So I, I drove the site today. It looks like you guys just paved Allison Road. I'll be honest, I, what is the request of the board from? To, to Monmouth, we, we wanted to leave alone just because we're not doing any driveway. I believe we can contribute to the sidewalk fund along Monmouth Road. Uh, from an Allison Road standpoint, just to stay on that and not jump around. We have a large frontage that goes to the back of the property and a lot of it is already encumbered by wetlands. So we'd ask for the waiver for many things southeast of our driveway back to be left alone. But if anything from our driveway up, if the board is looking for curbing, we can certainly do that.
But anything deficient, of course, the whole frontage should pay into the pedestrian safety fund.
We would, yes.
And if we can just talk a little bit about this out, or this bulk storage? In the specific conditions, um, you're not going to have any bulk storage, um, in any required front yard. And I think that's pretty clear from the, from the plan.
That is correct.
Could we get in the actual area where this bulk storage is going to, going to occur?
So what, what I think would be, what we can do for you as a potential condition of approval. Basically, if you, if you take a 50-to-60-foot access aisle and wrap it around the building, that's all for maneuverability of, of access vehicles. Anything outside of that 60 area has the potential for the, the laydown of those bulk products that they need for it. So I, I can hatch it, Mr. Cle, to show where it can go and then stay out of the access aisle.
That stacking is not going to exceed 10 feet?
That is correct. In, in height. Correct.
How about the, the fencing and screening requirement around the whole thing?
So we do have fencing on the perimeter. Um, it, as a dual factor, there's some low retaining walls due to the grade. And a retaining wall then needs a fence for fall protection. So instead of doing your typical four-foot chain link that you would see on top of a retaining wall, you do a six-foot, whatever the board prefers, um, stockade versus vinyl. The applicant's happy to do either or. And I do believe that we meet buffering. If, if you disagree, I have the real estate to add even more landscaping, but there are brand-new trees and landscaping around the areas that don't have existing vegetation. And then we left as much existing vegetation as possible. The, the good news again is that that residential zone really is only in that southeast corner. And you have a couple hundred feet of wetlands and trees. All of our neighbors to the north and the south are in that HC zone.
And the, and the last, last question, again, the bulk storage area, I'll say to the rear of the building. I'm looking at the curbing, um, to the rear and I'm guessing it might be 10 feet off the property line. And I'm also seeing a 25-foot side yard setback line. Why not put the curb on the side yard setback line to make sure that you don't have any, um, store, bulk storage encroaching into that side yard area?
It's a good recommendation. We can certainly do that. Honestly, it was just for maneuverability. The type of product? Go ahead, sir.
I, I can see that way. If it's not really defined, then well, you know, store to the curb. Well, the curb should be 25 feet in. If you did that, then you meet the setback.
Oh, let me be clear. Now I understand the concern of you and the board. The material, if, if you've been to the site, the, the thing that they're storing is very large and heavy. They need access to both sides of it. So my apologies. They need that extra area along the curb so that they can get a piece of equipment either behind it or in front of it. This is not a small feature that they're pushing to the back and then will be pulling forward. They need access on both sides, which is why we were confident in saying that we can comply. Because the, the bulk setback line, there's a lot of space between my building and that area. But I, I get your concern. If we just move in the curb line a little bit, then there won't be any potential, uh, violation in the future to go to the back.
But if you do need access to, um, to, to both ends, and I understand that, maybe a striping type, you know, plan where, where is bulk storage and what's used for circulation?
We can certainly do that. Absolutely.
That's all for now. Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Tremor?
So you're talking about a lowboy and heavy things to move around. What exactly are we putting in these?
Again, it, um, they are a specialty contractor that does piles for buildings that are on top of poor soils. So traditionally out in this area where we have decent soils, you just, you dig a trench, you pour concrete and your building goes on top of it.
Right. Using caissons instead.
Exactly, so...
So you're going to be piling up big piles of caissons and you're going to have cranes and excavators and everything moving in and out?
Not so much. They might have a couple excavators, but that's stored in their, on their Congress location. This location is to create rebar cages inside of that caisson. That will be stored and made inside of this building. But sometimes between jobs, they'll have those extra caissons like are on the property today and that's what's going to be stored. In no way will the rebar be stored out. Everything is going to be inside the building per the ordinance. But they just need some laydown area, we'll call it, in between projects. So that, those steel caissons will be outside.
So they'll just be brought outside to be loaded on the lowboys to be taken out?
Correct. But if they need to, say, build a rebar cage that's going to a specific job, they bring it inside the building, do whatever they need to do inside, put it onto the truck, store it overnight, and then hit the job in the morning.
Okay. But they're not going to be grinding and welding outside?
Say that again, sir. I'm sorry.
They're not going to be grinding or welding outside?
No, everything is inside of the building.
Okay. On the second and third floors, what's going to be in these buildings?
That's just offices. So, um, on our floor plan, you'll see bathrooms, uh, conference room, lunch break area. It's all for the employees that are working on the shop floor as well as the, uh, the administrative and executive offices.
So those 20 employees are going to have all three stories of the building to their...
They'll have access to all three, yeah.
That may be beneficial. It's only a portion of the building. That's the three stories where the office is going. It's not the entire length of the building.
It's just that small square located at the northern entrance. That's the only portion that's three stories. All the rest of it is, is a clear height warehouse.
All right, so just real quick, so are you guys manufacturing these things onsite?
Manufacturing's not the right word. Assembling is the better word. They're not, it's not a steel smelting plant. It essentially, rebar comes in on a lowboy, goes inside the building, and then they create a rebar cage that goes inside of the caisson. So a steel worker will tie it together, put it inside the caisson, and then leaves.
That's only a portion of what's occurring.
Correct.
The bulk of it is the, the storage of the steel itself. But sometimes they do have to assemble for a particular job.
Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, so we saw that one of those comments, at this time, there was not an elevator proposed. However, if any aspect of IBC building requirement needs an elevator, the applicant will certainly provide one. Certainly.
Do you plan on having, um, clients come?
There's really no reason for a client to come. Maybe, maybe one person just to see the facility, but, um, it's not a retail-type location. It's not even like a showroom, maybe like a plumbing manufacturer. I don't ever need a caisson, so I don't need to go to this facility. So I would say maybe once a year, twice a year, but never on a regular basis.
Okay, so that's why you wouldn't put an elevator in at this point?
The elevator really is for the request of, of just meeting with ADA accessibility, not for any, uh, potential customer or client to come into the building.
Okay. But we, are you considering putting the elevator in then?
Uh, just conditioning on approval that yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, they are. Mr. Peters, did you have something?
Apologies. Wanted to make sure as we went through what goes on in the building. I understand the applicant's attorney, applicant's engineer here to express those things that are written down. We make sure that we follow what's permitted in the highway commercial zone. This is an industrial zone. It's not a manufacturing zone. It's a highway commercial zone. So to the extent that we get that testimony to make sure that this is a permitted use in the zone, and again, almost as importantly for enforcement reasons, we find out what's not going on. So I, I think both the applicant and the board are doing a bang-up job making sure we get the record straight about what's going to be done in the HC zone. Thank you.
Do you have, uh, a, an operations specialist who could present some testimony regarding what's actually going to be happening inside of that building from soup to nuts?
We have a representative of the applicant here this evening if you would like us to call him.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Shea, I thought I was doing all right.
I think you're doing excellent. You're doing, doing, doing great.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, it sounds good.
So why don't we just, just, let's go, let's circle back to the use issue. Right, so just as a planner, how do you reconcile warehouse versus contractor warehouse? So how are you deeming this contractor warehouse with the end-user basically utilizing the entire facility? You know, with, with this storage facility?
Great, great question, Mr. Shea. Let me go through civil, traffic, architecture first, and then I'll close on planning. This layout that you see before you, the building design, is not designed as a warehouse. There's no formal truck court. There's no trailer storage, uh, storage spacing. And there's limited amount of dock doors. There's only roll-up doors so that people can drive in and out of this building. A warehouse will have a sunken loading dock so that the back of the truck can bring product in and out of it. So I can already tell from a civil engineering standpoint, this is not a warehouse facility. From an architecture standpoint, same thing. Everything is at-grade and it is laid out to be a contractor office. Although the showroom is allowed, we do not intend on having a showroom because we have no clients coming. A garage will store our equipment and vehicles. Warehouse, storage of the product that we need to use for the service of our general construction. And a shop, and that shop is, although not defined with paragraphs, in my opinion, a contractor shop is so that they can assemble what they need to go to the job site to be successful. Uh, this is not a raw materials yard. This doesn't house equipment such as gravel or, or dirt. This essentially is a, a contractor's location to put their equipment because you can't take this equipment home into your driveway. And it, per the Jackson ordinance, says it must be inside the building. We're testifying that it certainly will be. That's why it's over 50,000 square feet. And more so, it's a contractor shop, just like an electrician may be preparing different junction boxes and conduits. This is no different. It's just a, a bigger type of contractor with bigger equipment and bigger material that needs to go into the ground. Uh, so overall, in my opinion, we clearly meet the permitted use section of 24457A10 that lists various different components of this specialty use. And then it has that condition that materials and equipment must be stored completely within the building. And I think we've hammered that home that we certainly will do, will do that. The, the bulk storage item is also accessory principal permitted use within the HC zone. And I think through good discussion with the board and your professionals, I think with an additional striping plan, showing where that can be located to ensure that we comply with those conditions of the accessory use will go a long way and we're happy to make that a condition. So again, we're always concerned because contractor warehouse location can mean a lot of different things as we drive throughout this town and this county. Additionally, warehouses also come along with their own nuances. If you take a look at our traffic report, this was not modeled to have warehouse trip generation, which I know this board is very intimately familiar with. You'll see high trip generation for fulfillment center, cold storage, et cetera. This was modeled completely differently. So you're hearing from the applicant, but it also shows up on the site plan, the architectural floor plan, and you're conditioning the approval also on the traffic report, all saying that this is a specialty contractor building to house for this unique tenant. Should any of those three things that I just mentioned change, we'd be required to come back in for amended approval and possibly a different use approval.
What, what is the noise level that would be generated in this type of operation?
I would say because it's inside of the building, typical commercial that you have up and down the HC zone. The other great thing about this site is that our residents are hundreds of feet away from this property due to existing trees and wetlands on the parcel. Again, the main benefit is that we're taking what the applicant has onsite and we're bringing it inside of a closed building.
All right, continue then. Thank you.
That was the end of that.
I, if you have any civil, more civil engineering questions, Josh is obviously available to answer them. I also wanted to put them on in the capacity of a, a professional planner for the parking waiver as well. So if you would like me to do that at this point in time or if you would like to hear from operations first?
Leave it up to the board.
Parking, we've heard what we needed. Let's go to operations.
Okay.
Just don't go too far because the public will want to... Just don't go too far because the public will wanna ask you a few questions.
Okay. We have a representative of the applicant, Blaine Kelly.
Hi, good evening.
Just swear you in just a second.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And you're testifying in what capacity? Okay. Fact witnesses to operations is to?
Yes. As to operations. Blaine, what is your affiliation with the applicant?
I'm senior project manager, just next in line to the owner operator. Been working with them for 11 years now, running the overall company site and the offsite.
And in that role, you're familiar with the current operations of the company as, as well as what's proposed at the subject site, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So you've heard a lot from the board this evening questioning exactly what is happening at the site. Can you run through a typical day and the operations that are occurring as far as the building itself? And then, uh, the, the truck traffic and what is being proposed on the exterior of the building?
Yes. Okay. So inside the building, as you've heard, we do a lot of the deep foundations in, around New York area and various areas. For that, we've become self-sufficient in, um, building our own cages. So we're not reliant on anybody else. We go, we get the pieces of steel, we have equipment that we've, specialty equipment that we've bought, brought to this country, and we set it up in our, in our area, and then we can fabricate these cages. And then they go onto the truck that night, and then they go to the city the next morning to be used. Because in city, we don't have a lot of, New York City, sorry, um, we don't have a lot of space on sites. So we do a lot of offsite fabrication. So we're efficient when we bring stuff to the site. It's efficient, it's stacked, and it goes right into the job. And we service the job every morning. The trucks are in and out, picking up this material that our shop guys put together, and they bring to the site every morning.
Blaine, you're talking about the assembly, but the, the larger building itself is 52,000 square feet. The majority of the area is for the actual storage of the materials that you have as far as the, the steel, et cetera. And that is just a, a small component of what your operation is. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And as far as the exterior of the building, what types of materials or storage would be on the exterior of the building itself?
So the bulk of the material that we'd be talking about outside, as Josh was saying, is the casings. So the casings come in in, um, say, a 41-foot piece. We cut them into a 40-foot piece, and we put a thread on one end and a thread on the other end, go straight on the truck, and then it heads to the city. Because it's, the pipe, when they, when we buy the pipe, it doesn't have the ends on it, so you can connect them together. So what we do is we thread the end, we thread the other end, pick it up, and it goes onto our truck to be brought to the city to create the casings.
And there was a question earlier from Madam Chair that this is temporary storage. Is that correct?
Yeah, there'd be of, there's quite a lot of turnover, like, you're basically, you're sending, you can send out a full truck every day, which is 40,000 pound, 36,000 pounds worth of material going out. Like, and then sometimes when we're busy, there, there's two trucks of that goes. So you very rarely see the same material in the same spot. It's possibly replaced, and then it's empty as, as required. We don't have huge storage ahead of what we need because we can get the raw materials from people in Pennsylvania, et cetera. And we just go, we should, we pick it up, we bring it to our shop, we get it prepared, and then we send it straight to the job sites.
The word I, I was concerned about hearing at the beginning was the bulk of what you're storing. That's the only thing you'll be storing.
Yeah, well, I'm saying some is rebar inside. You have rebar, you have steel beams, and you have steel plates.
Inside, but outside, it will only be the casings.
Casings, casings. Because I can't put rebar or I can't put structural steel outside. If it rusts, it's no good. Exactly.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Sullivan?
So this facility will only be assembled, correct? So as stated earlier, it will be assembled, these casings. There will be no fabrication whatsoever of any kind?
In fabrication, all we're doing is we're getting the pieces and putting them together into like the lengths that we need. So as in fabrication, that's, I, it's hard to define what you mean.
You're not making anything?
No, we're not creating a new product for anything else. We're just putting those products together.
So the supplies come in and you put them together?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, we shape them to how they need to be. If we get a beam that's 60 foot long, we make it 55 foot long because that's what's required on the site, and it cuts, and it goes straight to the site like that.
There's no smell thing, there's no?
No, no, no.
Mr. Brazzi?
Yeah, I just wanna definitely get this defined. I don't like to play on words, but you say fabricating. I, I think our planner probably gonna turn over that. And difference between fabricating and assembly, and I think you just cleared that up, or I think that has to be recorded, that it's not fabricating, it's assembling stuff.
It's assembly of raw materials together.
I think that's very important for the table we're ever having to do.
Yes, agreed. It's just assembly of materials, no fabrication whatsoever.
So you're, you're not welding, you're not smelting. Let, let, let's just, no welding?
There will be partial welding needed.
There will be pressure welding.
No, some partial welding required. If we have a piece of steel that needs, um, a plate put onto the end of it, a beam that needs a plate put onto the end of it to fit into the project, we will weld, we will have a weld, like, that will be welded onto it to be prepared to go to the city.
Okay. And what, what percentage of the process is that? Is that like 2% of the overall assembly? Is that, what is that?
The welding itself?
Welding itself?
5% maybe?
Okay.
Yeah, it's only the prep, the prep of the ends, basically, of what's in there.
All right. And what about metalworking? There's no shaping of the metal, there's no heating it up and then molding it?
No, there's no presses or anything like that. You just cut it to the size you need it to be, and then you, you weld it on.
All right. So you, you're gonna be cutting the metal then?
Yes.
In this facility? Okay. All right. And then what else? Anything else about the process that you wanna tell us about?
No, this is really what we do in our other smaller shops, but our other shop is like 7,800 square feet. And then we have another portion that's like 10,000 square feet, and we're just trying to, like, have it expanded into one big, one bigger area that we can base out of, because we're not just New York City, we're down, we're heading down to Florida. We're kinda, you know, we're trying to expand into this area as well. And this is a perfect area for us to grow.
So you're saying 95% of the, of, of the work is just puzzling the pieces together?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. And prepping it, putting it onto the trailer and getting it ready, stacking it onto, in the correct members to go through the correct time to the site.
All right. And then when the casing is fully put together, you take it outside, it stayed there temporarily, right, and?
Once it's prepared, we usually try and get it onto a trailer to go to the site the next time, the next day.
What is your definition of temporary?
Uh, to go outside a day or two, maximum.
All right. And you make that a condition of approval?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. And it's not gonna be any more than 10 feet high, right, to comply with the board's?
No, never more than 10 feet high, no. There's no need to, to, to space this large up.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair? The, um, the trucks, they're all owned by EDC?
ECD, correct. Yeah, we own all of our own trucks, tractor trailers and trailers.
Where are they maintained?
Where are they maintained? In our shop in Congress, New York. We have a, a specific machinery shop with like a, the full thing is set up there that we can, all of our equipment is serviced where our mechanics are based in our shop in Congress, New York.
And the, uh, the equipment that you brought, I think you said, indicated brought from abroad?
No, no, I'm saying like just one piece of equipment. I'm talking, not the actual machinery, it's all from here. It's all CAT or whatever.
It might be a question for the architect, but are there floor drains?
Will be floor drains required in a couple of areas, yes. Inside, inside where the bathroom is, and just where there'll be like an eyewash and a sink, a wash-hand sink.
And that'll be connected to the sewer system?
Yes, correct. And it's a septic system that it goes to the drain.
But there's no floor drains that, you know, might accept some, um, fluids from a truck?
No, there, there will be no work done on the truck inside. There, there's no setup to do that.
And there's no floor drains except for bathrooms, eyewash, that type of thing?
Yeah, that's all we've, that's all we've put forward.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that would be our last witness unless you would like to hear from our traffic engineer, Corey Chase.
Wait, one more thing. The applicant agrees to just identify where in the site plan they're gonna have the storage, right? So.
Yes, as a condition of approval. Yes.
A striping system.
Striping to show where the edges of storage can go, as well as, I, I believe it was testified that we would provide a hatched area where the storage area could possibly be.
And we would like to hear from your traffic engineer.
Sure. Okay. Our next witness is Corey Chase.
All right. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Corey Chase with Dynamic Traffic, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, bachelor's of science in civil engineering.
Please spell your last name for the, uh, the board secretary.
Certainly. It's C-H-A-S-E. First name's Corey, C-O-R-E-Y.
All right. And the board accepts your credentials?
Thank you. Welcome to Jackson.
Thank you.
Corey, you prepared a traffic impact study date December 8, 2023 that was submitted to the board, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If you could very briefly go through the findings of your report, how you arrived at those conclusions? And then I know since the time you prepared the report, I think you have more refined operations information from the applicant. If you can address, uh, your opinion on the impact of the, uh, neighboring roadway system.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, as Lisa just mentioned, we did prepare a traffic impact study. It was previously submitted to the board dated December 8, 2023. Uh, and looking at the overall impacts of the redevelopment of the subject property on the adjacent roadway network, we focused on the peak hours, which is, you just heard from both operations testimony as well as the civil testimony provided by Mr. Seawald. Uh, you know, being that this is a construction-associated use, you know, these employees are coming to the site at, at around 5:00 AM. The trucks are leaving relatively early. So what we presented in our analysis was looking at typical roadway peak hours. So between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. Uh, what you've heard, our hours of operation are from 5:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So there'll certainly be no impact on the adjacent roadway network during that evening peak commuter hour. All of our employees are gonna be back to the site and have gone home by that time. So what we presented in here is really conservative, and what it showed is the adjacent intersection of Monmouth Road with Allison Road would continue to operate at acceptable levels of service. The traffic associated with the development of the subject property represented less than 2% of the traffic at that adjacent intersection. And as you heard, we're gonna have a maximum of 20 employees on site currently with six tractor trailers going in and out a day. Um, just to give the board an idea as to what that level of traffic generation constitutes, the New Jersey Department of Transportation and the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they've set a threshold of 100 additional trips in a peak hour is what they define as a significant increase in traffic. So this site's gonna generate well below that. Uh, you heard it through prior testimony that were amenable to, uh, accommodating the police department's request of imposing a left-turn egress-only restriction so that everyone exiting the site goes back to Monmouth Road. Uh, and I know Mr. Peters brought up earlier, um, the potential impacts associated with the development of the industrial park located directly to the north of this subject property across Allison Road, the, the Tiger Business Park. Uh, we were able to get a copy of that traffic study from the township. I did take a look at that impact. And the results were similar to what we had presented in our traffic impact. So I'd be happy to submit that to Mr. Peters for further review as a condition of approval if he so wishes. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board or its professionals have.
Any questions from the board regarding traffic? Mr. Marza?
Um, so the, the hours of operation are from 5:00 AM to 3:00 PM. I don't see any, any times in here that kind of correlate to that start and end time. Cause I see that, like, at the end of the day, I think your, your start time was at 4:30. Is there any reason why you didn't put those times in there?
Yeah, that's a great question. So this really represents a conservative analysis, and we, we do this so that, uh, you heard some discussions earlier, you know, if this was ever to change hands, you know, what would the potential impacts be? So we focus our analysis on the, the typical peak hours of the roadway, knowing that if it works during those times, um, knowing that the applicant has its hours of operations such that it will have very limited impacts during those times. Um, so that represents a worst-case scenario. So what we're showing is very conservative, um, knowing that in fact the applicant would operate it at what we term off-peak hours.
Anything else? Gentlemen?
Mr. Chase, have your, anyone from your office made an application to the county with regards to this application?
I believe an application was made by Dynamic. Was it made already, Josh? County application? Yeah. County application was made. I don't know if it was approved yet. Not yet.
I was wondering, given the nature of the use, if you had received any comments back from the county as it relates to the intersection? It's my recollection from the application we had across the street, that the county had some either improvements that were necessary or contributions to be made to the intersection. I just don't recall. Um, so my concern, Madam Chair, is that if the board acts in the affirmative, it has to specifically state that you're gonna need to deal with the county as a separate entity. So here, the, you proffer an application before a board in Jackson Township, and you have two frontages. You widen the frontages, curb, sidewalks, storm drainage, street lighting. So they're asking to contribute to the, uh, the traffic safety fund for curbing sidewalks for the areas that they're not gonna improve Allison Road. I just wanna make sure we're clear as to what Jackson Township expects from the applicant if they go into construction.
I thought we did say that they had to provide curbing.
Yes, along the frontages, we're going to?
Along the frontage of Allison. Except to the wetlands portion.
Correct.
From, from the driveway to Monmouth.
Right.
Right.
That's along Allison and then on, on Monmouth, they would contribute.
And then as a condition of approval, we would expect any, uh, county recommendations?
Absolutely. We understand that we have to submit to the county as a separate entity.
Just, you know, on, you know, on the issue of, of the curbing, you know, at the intersection, say regardless of what Monmouth County, you know, approves or disapproves, uh, a curb return, um, along the corner of Allison and Monmouth?
Yeah, we could certainly work with your office to come up with an acceptable limit of curbing at that intersection.
But, um, just to define where the?
Correct, where the radius is and, so it's not edge of pavement.
Yeah, and I can't believe the, um, um, that Monmouth County would have any issue with that. So it'd be a recommendation to do some type of curbing, you know, at that, at that intersection.
Certainly, we're happy to work with you on that.
Thank you.
Anything from the board?
And just to be clear, so if the county comes back, says that you need to make any contributions, the applicant's more than willing to do what they have to do?
Yeah, the applicant's willing to comply with the county comments as needed to get approval.
All right.
All right. Shall we open it to the public at this time?
Well, I, I think that we still have to have the engineer put the planning testimony out.
Do we need any other? I, I thought that was the end of your testimony.
That wasn't a testimony. We were gonna put Josh on separately in the capacity as a professional planner, but I believe Madam Chair thought that there was enough testimony put on as far as the parking variance.
I think we asked him all the questions that dealt with everything he was supposed to talk about. But I'm sure the public may have more questions.
Josh, let's just put you on, just in the capacity as a professional planner, just to make, make the record, uh,
Clear.
Clear and complete. There was a parking waiver and, waiver identified, I think, by the engineer and variance identified by the, by the board's planner. Can you discuss whether you believe, in your professional opinion as a planner, whether the board has the ability to grant this?
Certainly, and I'll be brief. This is a clear-cut case of a C2 planning variance. Basically, that the positives outweigh the detriments. We're looking to keep development to a minimum here, so you have a better planning where you can reduce onsite impervious coverage, comply with all of your other bulk standards for impervious coverage, building coverage, and setbacks. And because you have a custom site-specific approval, you get to customize this site plan to be utilized just for this operator. So overall, I believe that it is in a benefit and a better planning alternative to have less parking on site, comply with what the, um, applicant needs, also complies with the ITE parking generation manual. It certainly advances the purposes of the Minnesota law for G, I, and J. Most importantly, the better efficient use of land. And overall, I don't see any negative detriment to keeping the onsite parking to a minimum. And if we had to, of course, there's still other pavement areas that could be restriped to comply. So overall.
And to that end, you did say you would provide our, uh, professionals with a overlay plan for additional parking if the need arose.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
That, okay. Is that fine? All right. Anything else?
Any other questions with the board, professionals?
All right. Now we'll open it to the public. You might as well sit there. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please come forward.
For cross-examination purposes. Nope.
What he meant by that was that the questions have to be asked concerning the testimony that was given.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, do you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last of the record.
Linda Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N.
And your address?
50 Richter Road in Jackson. So I'm a neighbor. I did receive my letter, and I had my whole list of things, and thank you so much for me being able to check off a lot of them. One of my questions is about chemicals, any chemical smells or any thing being stored in there that we should be concerned about?
No chemicals onsite, ma'am.
Okay. The other...
Ma'am, if you could speak into the microphone, it's being recorded.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
The other issue I had was I know about... I've been in my home for 38 years when the development was nothing but woods. I knew about the drainage problem because when that was filled with crushed cement, it backed up into our homes because I live behind them. I don't live exactly behind that area, but I live right next to it. So my concern was about the water. It's... You're basically saying that it will be straightened out, and there won't be that big drainage problem that we have right now where the water is still lays?
So great question. This is the important part of site plan applications, redevelopment, and having to go to about half a dozen different agencies. What's out there today, prior to my client closing on the property, was an illegal fill and development of the parcel, which created to a possible drainage issue in the nearby area with the redevelopment of this property. The building and the pavement will be collected onsite through a piping system and then sent underground to five different types of stormwater management facilities, floors, pavement, underground infiltration, and an above-ground feature as well, substantially improving the onsite drainage characteristics of the property and the surrounding areas. And then it discharges into the wetlands. So not only do we have to obtain the blessing from this board, we also have to obtain the blessing from the DEP as well.
Okay. You talked about the traffic. I know that the Tiger Ladies property, we've been back and forth, and I don't know where that ends right now or where it is, but I do know about the traffic. And I do see that you said you took that... The traffic study was done on December 8, 2023. My concern with the traffic there is that making a left out of Allison Road to Monmouth Road or making a right out of Allison Road, much safer to make a right than a left. And I'm not talking out of where... Right, your driveway. I'm talking about out of 537. And if we're going to have other buildings and everybody's going to come into cluster with traffic, it's very difficult during Great Adventure. I know you've heard this before. Nobody seems to take traffic studies when Great Adventures is open and Frey Fest is open. Nobody seems to want to know at that point, what are we supposed to do? There's times from Freehold for me to turn left into Allison, which I do take to go home. I could sit in that traffic down to Silum Road for a half an hour, which literally takes six and a half minutes. So big concern for me is traffic. I'd love to see... I'd love to see that you come out at peak times when the neighborhood will tell you what the peak times are because we know what the peak times are and we know when the peak seasons are. Traffic on 537 has gotten horrendous, and if you have anything that you can add to tell me that it's going to, you know, be okay and that these trailers or whatever storage units are going to make a left because I'm sure they're going to 195. I don't think they're going to the Freehold Mall. So they're going to 195, which means they've got to come out and make a left on 537.
And those are all great points, ma'am.
Which is one other statement. The Tiger Ladies property, we were told if they came out at 537, they weren't... Monmouth County said, no, you're not coming out on 537. You've got to come out on this Allison Road, which they did just pave about six months ago. They seem to have made it a tiny bit wider, but then I heard a story that they're going to put a cul-de-sac in there. And you're... We're... Not that we have to go that way, don't get me wrong, but it is a closer way to get to 537 than come out on Broderick, make the right, another right on 537 to get to Freehold. That's a concern.
Yeah, certainly. Those are all valid points, ma'am. And what you heard through earlier testimony from the applicant as well as Mr. Seawald was that, you know, the unique operations of this facility, and given that the contractor wants the materials onsite for when construction starts onsite at 7:00 a.m., so the unique... Those unique operations mean that they're going to be leaving much earlier than those peak times, but they're also going to be returning before those peak times.
Right, right.
So you're dealing with really what we call a complementary use in that it generates traffic, even though it is minimal with only 20 employees and six trucks. It generates traffic during those off-peak times. If this was an office building or something of that nature where everyone was showing up between 8:00 and 9:00 and leaving between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., you know, we have a much more significant concern because you're going to be compounding the traffic onto those peak conditions that are already out there today.
Okay. I like the hours of operation. I will ask about the lighting. I think you said, because I think I wrote down, that it will go off an hour after the building closes?
Correct.
And come on an hour earlier than them getting there.
Approximately.
You're saying 35 feet. I don't know what that is in...
30 feet.
30 feet high. I don't know what the highest tree is over there, but I know that I can sit on my back deck and I can see over there. That was a little bit of a concern, the lighting. But as long as it's going off at an hour that is accessible to the surrounding, you know, neighbors, then I guess I'm, you know, of course, I'm fine with that. I'd like the board to answer a question for me. I know we're not talking about the Tiger Ladies property and the... Also, the building that's going across the street from Allison Road, and I heard that you were there. And I wish you would have stopped by because I'm having my house sided.
Sorry.
And I think somebody... A couple of people came down my road today, and I was like, oh, I don't know what that's all about. We're on a dead end, so anybody that...
I try to drive by every site.
Right.
Either on Sunday or Monday.
Right.
For the meetings. I saw no serious issue. Now, I know making a left is not going to be a joy on Monmouth Road, but then we have to understand that this is a business.
I understand.
And their... And their goal, I would assume, is to get to 195.
Right.
Which isn't too far and doesn't go as far as Great Adventure.
Right.
So they're not going to really be in that kind of traffic.
Right. And I believe what they're doing is wonderful, and I knew Kenny Long prior to in the house. I'll be sad to see it go down. I've been in the area for, like I said, a long time. Is anybody taking into consideration what's going on with the Tiger Ladies property and the thing across the street to see what's going to happen when it's all there?
Well...
Because I don't know anything's been settled on that.
When we consider traffic, we always hear about different projects that are ongoing, but only to certain degree.
Okay. So the residents are still going to be able to utilize Allison Road and go out and make a left or a right?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's only... We're only concerned that no trucks make a right on Allison.
Well, that would be my other concern, and I'm sure that won't happen. It has happened in the past with other trucking companies that were there.
But it's not going to happen because they are going to curb it in a certain way that it will not make it comfortable for a truck to make a right turn.
Okay.
And signage.
Okay. Um, that's everything. I think that's everything. Thank you very much.
Anytime.
This is an easy one.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Please state your name, spell your last of the record, because we don't know who you are.
Jim Silakia, S-I-L-E-C-C-H-I-A. Live at 6 Harfield Drive. I'm nowhere near this site.
Been here as long as we have.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Think I'd know this by now, right? My question is very simple. I believe the planner or engineer, whichever aspect he was doing at that point, and also the project manager, senior project manager, made the exact same... Used the exact same word. He said this is a perfect location for their business. I get you're ratable for Jackson, so it's a great thing. I'm not here to dispute that. What makes this spot the perfect location for you?
So from a planning standpoint, wanted to permitted use within the zone. So the board and the council contemplated in the master plan that this is the type of use that they want on this corridor, probably near close proximity to the interchange. And from a client perspective, it's because of the close proximity to the interchange because their trucks are going to go onto 195 and then to the turnpike in other interstates to get to Philadelphia or New York City for their special caissons.
Okay. That's fine. The other comment, and I think you kind of stated, is all six trucks are coming from 195. There will never be a truck coming down Monmouth Road.
It's not anticipated at all.
Because that would be the big concern I would have is during peak hours trying to make a left on Monmouth County Road, on Monmouth Road, onto Allison Road, especially during Great Adventure season, the people coming down Monmouth Road behind the truck waiting. I don't know if there's enough room. So the other thing that I have... I've been spinning around is just I keep hearing contractor warehouse, but if I listen to the definition of contractor warehouse that Jackson has been using lately, this doesn't fit. So I'm kind of confused.
It fits better, sir, than a warehouse. A warehouse is a place to store.
No.
And distribute. This is not what's happening here. This is an assembly, which is what goes on at contractor warehouses. It fits the definition a little better, although there is no pure definition. Yeah.
I know we went... I know the boards have gone round and round as to what a definition of a contractor warehouse is. That's why just from everything I've heard, contractor warehouses are more landscape uses.
Let's restrict it right now to questions. It's just for cross-examination, so... Well, it's for right now, it's cross-examination, right? So we'll get to the general comment shortly, but if you have any questions about the definition and how they define it, just ask them.
Okay. This board this year has been seeing a lot of contractor warehouse come before it. They have all been somewhat different than what you're doing. I'm not just... I'm not saying you shouldn't be doing it. As a matter of fact, I kind of look at what you're doing and go, this is a good spot for it. I don't have a problem with it. I just want to, for future references...
Want to know the difference.
I want to make sure that when we say contractor warehouse, we're always looking at a contractor warehouse.
Certainly. I was even here in April, a couple of months ago, and that is a very different type of building design. And you'll see long skinny buildings with multiple doors, sometimes sunken loading, sometimes at-grade loading, and you could have dozens of different tenants in there. That is more of your traditional contractor warehouse. It's a smaller footprint, smaller square footage, because you're essentially leasing out to the local landscaper, you know, electrician, even an engineering firm who may need a truck, maybe a lab for a geotech, et cetera. This is very specific. The HC zone does not just say flex warehouse or contractor warehouse. That would be more applicable to all the industrial warehousing zones that are part of Jackson, and they are very specific, actually. It should include a contractor's office, which this has, a showroom, not applicable to our client, garage, that's where our vehicles will be stored, warehouse, storage of internal property, and shop for all of that assemblage that you heard before. So I think Jackson actually has a very specific definition of the niche group of people that can go inside of this, and they did that because it's their HC zone. You see that more for retail-type of development. Any other more intense aspect of a warehouse would be associated with those heavier zones, the warehousing, industrial and light industrial zones.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the application?
So just to be clear, we closed cross-examination. Now we're going to open it up to public comments. But I believe that Mr. Bressi had one question for the engineer regarding waste disposal.
Anything covering all about the waste disposal, where it's at on there?
It'll be stored... Yeah, thank you, sir. Great question. Always comes up on an application. Apologize for not touching on it. Sometimes you'll see an outside trash enclosure with different receptacles. Everything is stored inside of the building, everything. The small garbage enclosure for the lunch and the paper waste, any byproduct of the assemblage that you heard will go back on that same truck inside the building, will go back out somewhere else. If the board sincerely wanted it, the applicant has already advised and said that we can provide an onsite corralled enclosure. They just don't need it. It's going to be inside of the building.
Nope. Happy to have it inside.
Okay.
That's fine.
And garbage pickup? Is that going to be...
Private hauler will be taken care by the applicant.
In between the same hours of operation or...
Absolutely.
Anything else? Anyone in the public wish to come forward and make any other comments? I'll accept a motion to close.
Seeing the one come forward, I move to close public comment portion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to wrap it up?
Just for all the reasons stated on the record before you this evening, we ask that you look favorably upon the application. Thank you.
And our professionals, any closing comments from you? Okay. Then we'll look for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion based on all professional testimony. The movement, the applicant behavior, we ask for some movement in the application of the board of traffic control. We want to make a motion to approve.
Look for a second.
I second that.
Okay, Mr. Bressi?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Chammer?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and attention. We'll take a 10-minute break, and I mean 10 minutes.
Warehouse and 7,000 square feet of office. The project is compliant with the zoning requirements of the HC Zone. We would ask testimony from the applicant to confirm that the building coverage and impervious coverage complies excluding the on-site wetland area. The site is impacted by freshwater wetlands and a number of environmental constraints. So any approval that the board may grant would be conditioned upon the receipt of the appropriate approvals. The project will connect to public water and use it on private on-site septic system. The project is compliant with the partner requirements of the ordinance. We should ask the testimony from the applicant regarding the road improvements that are proposed for West Commodore and also the extent of the need for fill and compliance with Chapter 346, which regulates fill and importation to the site. That's all at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our office has a report dated May 29th of this year. Project's located in HC Highway Commercial Zone. It is a more familiar contractor office storage building that we're used to seeing. That being said, we'd certainly like to hear some testimony about what they're going to do, again, almost to put forth what they're not going to do. I didn't see dumpsters on the plans. I'd like some testimony about the dumpsters. And lastly, we should talk about the vehicle circulation. What vehicles would be proposed to access these? Is there a limitation, given the layout, the design, the limited amount of asphalt between buildings? You know, so maybe there aren't going to be any tractor trailers, everything's going to come in a box truck, that sort of vehicle circulation testimony. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just by way of brief introduction, just to add to what your consultants laid out, I just wanted to state for the record that in addition to preliminary and major site preliminary major site plan approval and finer major site plan approval, the applicant is also seeking certain design waivers that I believe came up in Mr. Clea's letter. And also, we are dealing with two lots, and I think there was a comment about consolidating the two lots. So we would seek that relief as well, a lot consolidation. So I guess in essence, four categories of relief: preliminary site plan, final site plan, design waiver, lot consolidation. Just by way of, again, further introduction and some planning for the Chair and the Board, we intend to call four witnesses. We're actually going to start with our architect, which is a little out of my typical order, but we're doing that because Mr. Roth came in from Chicago, and we wanted to make sure we got him on the record. We didn't know how the timing was going to go tonight. So we're going to start. I'm not sure when his flight back is, but you can certainly ask him that once he gets sworn in. Okay, okay, we have something in common. So we're going to start with the architecture, and then I'd like to call the principal of the applicant, Mr. Andrew Werbler. He's going to speak to some of those operational questions that were raised in the review letters. And then followed by our site engineer, Walter Hopkins, Walter Hopkin. And last but not least, our traffic engineer, Scott Kennel from McDonough Ray. And unless there's any other housekeeping items, we would start with our architect from Chicago, Mr. Scott Roth.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your credentials to the record.
Sure, my name is Scott Roth, R O T H.
My name is Scott Roth, R O T H. I'm president of Roth Architects, Inc., in business since year 2000. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for 31 years. I also practice in Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan, and Pennsylvania.
Licensed in New Jersey, correct?
Sorry?
Licensed in New Jersey?
I'm licensed in New Jersey, correct.
Scott, I'm going to turn it over to you. If there are exhibits that we wish to mark, we'll mark those as you go along, but what we'd like you to do, just take us through the architectural proposal of the building.
Sure. We're putting the architecture first, but as you can see on the screen, this is a typical building for our office flex warehouse. And each space will have its own garage door, will have its own private office, and a bathroom facility, which is ADA accessible. The building itself on the exterior has a concrete split block base, and the upper portion is a metal clad system, vertical metal panels. The roof is metal, it's a prefab building. Does have metal downspouts and gutters all the way around, and the base does carry on all four sides.
Just a quick interruption, Scott. The plan that's up on the screen right now, is that part of the original plan set that went in with the original application, or is this a new exhibit we need to mark?
No, this is of the original submission. This is a typical four-unit building. I believe there's two other exhibits behind this that show the other footprints of the other two buildings that are similar in layout. Okay, yes. That would be the other building? Sheet A3, there should be an A2 before that, I believe. There you go. Nope, that's A1. There should be an A2 in there. There it is. Yep. So all three buildings are similar in terms of what the exteriors are and what the floor plan does, it's just they're different lengths.
Do you have any color renderings?
Yes, so that request came in late. I do have them here to pass around if I'm allowed to do that.
Yes, please.
Before we do that, I just want to check, I'm not sure if those made it in electronically. Do you also have rendering, architectural renderings? If not, we have paper copies, but there's a...
Whatever you submitted, I'll just leave that.
Okay. So we'll do the paper copies and we'll mark those. Scott, if you can identify what we're passing out, and we're going to mark that as exhibit A1.
So what we're passing around is the actual building that's built in another municipality. So you can see how it looks in reality, both in scale and massing, its materials, and actually the color scheme which was asked for. This is sheet A4, so it would be the fourth exhibit.
Just to be clear, so we have this labeled as A4 on this sheet, but this sheet's going to be identified as A1 in the record?
That is correct.
All right.
Well, that's pretty much what I have as far as describing the building. Just to give some more insight on it, it will be a fully sprinklered building as per the NFPA 13. It's a non-combustible building, so there's no wood that's being built here, it's all steel and block.
Solar.
Okay. I'll defer that to my client, because I'm not sure what we're looking to do as far as that right now. But I will say that these offices are air-conditioned and heated. The warehouse space itself is heated as well. And insulated.
Let's have a brief question. Have you considered making this look attractive at all? I mean, just even in the industry of making these facades remotely attractive?
We can take a look at that. As I said, this was an example of one that's already built. Obviously, colors can change. You know, it is a warehouse and it is in a rectangular box, so...
There's so much happening in your field. There's so many interesting things going on that even students are taking very bland, basic scenes and just, nothing dramatic, but just making them remotely attractive. I think it would be a really nice change in the industry.
We can take a look at that, certainly.
So just following up on that, would the applicant be willing to send a colored rendering into, for board review, just to take a look at it, to make sure it's aesthetically what we're looking for?
Absolutely.
Can you just send it to our...
Yeah.
Sure. We'll do that.
Quick one, floor drains?
Not inside the building, no.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
So this is going to be a representation of, hopefully not, but this is going to be a representation of all four of the buildings?
Correct.
All right. And they're all basically prefab of the same nature?
Correct.
All right.
Maybe some color variance among the four buildings might be aesthetically interesting.
Sure.
Mr. Roth, you had indicated, I think on one of the plans, that each building had one mechanical area or mechanical room?
Yes.
Can you just explain that, please?
Sure. Each building has a mechanical room set aside for the sprinkler operation. The house electric panel will be in there and the alarm system. That services the whole building.
Thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, you know, hang on. So the inside of the structure, so it's going to be, how many end users are you looking to contain?
We have no users at this time, so we really don't know. If you don't mind holding that question for our next witness, who's Andrew Werbler, even though he won't be able to answer that with a number, he could at least explain to you what he expects to happen.
But inside the building, architecturally, so are we, is it predominantly, we predominantly looking at contractor use? Is there some kind of office component to it? Is there...
Again, I would have Mr. Werbler just describe that. Yeah, I think you have a better idea once he, he's operating one of these now in Lakewood, so I think he can give you a good idea of what we expect. Can't guarantee, but it's, I think it's typical of what might happen.
As long as you said...
Right. It'll give you an idea at least.
Comparison.
Yes.
All right.
May I call my next witness?
Sure.
Yeah, my next witness is Andrew Werbler.
Yeah. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? All right, please list your credentials to the record.
My name is Andrew Werbler. I'm the principal, managing member of H W Jackson LLC, the applicant.
All right, testifying as an operations expert?
I guess you could say that, yeah. As Ron said, while we don't have any units pre-leased, this project is conceived as contractor warehouses and storage spaces for small businesses. We do, as Ron said, have a similar project in Lakewood and another project in Marlboro Township. Currently, the uses in those other projects are HVAC contractors, roofing and siding contractor, closet installer, those types of things. The units can be divided into spaces as small as 1650 square feet. That includes a 12 by 16 office with an ADA accessible bathroom, and each unit has its own ground level drive-in bay door. Tenants may take more than one unit, and that's common. Not everybody does, but it's not unusual for a tenant of business to want two units. That would bring them to 3,300 square feet. It's rare that somebody wants more than that type, more than that amount of space. Each tenant, as I said, has a garage door for their own loading purposes, and these are proposed as 12 by 14-foot doors. The space in front of that door is approximately 13 by 29 on the plan, and that's used for either loading in and out of the unit or for their own business parking, although they also have two dedicated parking stalls in front of their own unit. We will ensure, in response to your professionals' letters, that our leases contain hours of operation language that's consistent with your municipal ordinance, if it's spelled out in the ordinance. Our experience is that the contractors typically come any time between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. to load up for the day. And so that's why I believe in our narrative. We put hours of operation starting at 6:00 a.m. We do not have any proposed directory sign. We have no anticipated retail use here, no wall-mounted identification signs. The units are all numbered, and we permit the businesses to identify their business on their entry doors, and that's how they're located. Again, in response to some of the questions raised in the letters, the site improvements are going to be owned and maintained by us, the applicant. We are responsible for the shell of the buildings, any structural components of the buildings. The interior maintenance of the individual units are handled by the tenants individually, which, you know, changing light bulbs, plumbing stoppages, that type of thing. I do personally visit all of our properties multiple times a week. We have an existing management staff who also visits all properties routinely. They pick up debris, ensure all the landscaping is being maintained, snow maintenance, and that there's no other, you know, safety or aesthetic issues. Regarding Mr. Peters' comment about the trash removal, the way we do handle that, because the tenants do vary in what they do use. Currently, everybody stores a two- or three-yard dumpster on wheels inside their unit, and they wheel it out just on pickup day and they bring it in. And again, we do patrol the properties to ensure proper compliance with that.
Andrew, if I could just ask you one follow-up question. When you testified as to what the typical uses were in your existing buildings, that was not meant to necessarily limit your uses, is that correct?
Correct. We are intent to comply with all the uses that are permitted in the ordinance.
And there'll be no outside storage?
No, no outside storage.
Nothing further, Mr. Werbler?
No chemicals?
No chemicals or hazardous substances are permitted.
Any other board questions? Mr. Clea, Mr. Peters, any questions for this gentleman?
I got one question. You said that you wouldn't, you know, there's no retail plan. Did you stipulate there's no retail? You can't have retail in there.
Yeah, no retail.
Mr. Barza?
So I just wanted to clarify the time that you would be open, and like, what's the end time? Hours of operation?
It's really up to the individual businesses, so typical is if most of the contractors do come sometime between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. to load up for the day, and most of them are back, you know, certainly by 5:00, if not earlier. Typically do some office work. We do leave the, I'll leave the lighting to the engineer, but, you know, in our experience, what we do is the street lights, we do have on a timer to shut those off so they're not on all night. But there are facade wall pack lights to provide some safety at night if somebody does stay in the office past dark. Those are on photocell, those will stay on typically all night.
And that's seven days a week?
The lights?
No, the use.
Our experience that our, the commercial properties are typically pretty quiet on the weekends, and again, you know, we will include in our leases any compliance...
And no nights? No night activity?
No, nobody really there at night.
All right.
I have a question.
Mr. Trama?
So there's going to be no chance of a body shop, mechanical shop, pool supply?
What was the last one? I'm sorry.
Pool supply, because I know there's nearby, they use a very similar building, and it's a pool supply place and...
Pool supplies or chemicals, that's the concern.
I see. I'll start first with the auto. We do not permit mechanics or auto body shops. The primary thing is that they're, they are dirty, they produce a lot of byproducts. And also the parking, we like to preserve the parking to make it fair for all the tenants. I don't have any pool supply companies at any of the other buildings. Again, when the fire sprinkler designer kind of gives us what we are and are not allowed to store in the building, and we comply with that, I don't recall if that was on the list, but it's never come up. I don't have any experience with pool supply companies.
Okay, thank you.
So you'd have no trouble stipulating no chemicals on site?
I think chemicals a broad term, but if you'd like to prohibit, you know, I don't...
Hazardous materials.
Hazardous materials. That, yes, absolutely.
How's that?
And that is in our leases, no hazardous materials.
Okay, good. Mr. Solomon?
Would you be willing to stipulate that there would be no operations past 8 p.m.?
Would that, any office operations past 8 p.m. as well, like if somebody's...
Any operations.
Any operations whatsoever past 8 p.m.? Sure, yeah. I'm sure that's fine. Most contractors are not there at 8 p.m. anyways.
Anything? Gentlemen? All right. We have another witness.
Yes, Madam Chair, our next witness is our site engineer, Mr. Walter Hopkin.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, please spell your name, spell your last with a record.
Sure, Walter Hopkin, H O P K I N.
And your credentials?
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. I'm a certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor of science from Drexel University, and I have been accepted here before. It's been a while.
So you got, you got a few credentials. Just a few.
It's just a fee, it's just a yearly fee.
And you're going to be testifying as which one of those multiples of credentials?
Professional engineer. I don't believe that we have any variances that we require planning testimony, but if necessary, it would.
Just engineer.
Yes. Thank you. So I will kind of reorient the board to the site for the record. I'll do it quickly.
Walter, I'm going to interrupt you. Do you want to have a different exhibit out?
Yeah, if it's okay, the first exhibit, which was the color rendering. That's it. Thank you. And that's a color rendered version of our plan submitted to the board dated December 5th, 2023, with a satellite imagery over it. To answer Mr. Bressi's question, I believe we used Nearmap, which is flown every six months, so it's probably been within six months that, pay a little extra for that.
And that is a new exhibit we're going to mark as exhibit A2, correct?
Whatever you prefer.
Well, A2 is not part of the plan set.
Correct. This is an exhibit, yes.
This is exhibit A2.
A2 site plan.
A2's colored...
Color rendering, yeah.
Correct, colored site.
Yes.
Just a point, on the bottom, Mrs. Tantrabat Jackson, Monmouth County, New Jersey. We're in Ocean County, New Jersey.
Thank you. Thank you.
Says the council.
So it is a 16.28 acre site. Currently, it's vacant, known as Block 2603, lots 5 and 22. It's located west of your intersection of West Commodore and Wright DeBeau, and it actually does front on both roads. If you can see Wright DeBeau at the top of the screen and West Commodore at the bottom of the screen. It is located in your HC Zone, and the surrounding uses to the north is, again, Wright DeBeau Road. There's a warehouse just to the east of us that you can see. That's in your MF Zone. There's also a single-family residential across the street, which does have some buffering along the roadway that you can see, and there's also some fencing. To the south is West Commodore. There's a single-family residential development just off the site that we couldn't squeeze onto it. There are buffers also there, vegetated buffers, and that's located in your R3 Zone. To the east is a single-family residential. Just east of that was the, is a, an application this office actually prepared for miles. It's, I think, listed in your professionals' letters as residential. There is a residential component to it, but there's also auto sales there as well. And then to the east of that is Jerry's. To the west is a vacant piece of property and wetlands, and that's also in your HC Zone. Currently, it's vacant. As I indicated, the drainage pattern generally goes from the right of the page to the left. You'll see that there's a blue line, which is a tributary to the Montecito, and that's where the site drains towards. There is a letter of interpretation that we've applied for to delineate the wetlands. Those are shown on this plan, and we don't intend to encroach on the wetlands or any of the buffers as part of this application. So although we'll need DEP's concurrence with our delineation, we won't need to go back to them for any encroachment on the buffers. There's also a riparian buffer that would be associated with that tributary, and we're respecting that as well. I believe in one of your professionals' comments, there was a question about encroachment on the riparian buffer. I had the same question, but then I looked at it again, and it's, it's just a labeling thing, and we can clarify that with your professionals. There's no encroachment intended on the riparian buffer. What we have before you, we believe, is variance-free. It's also to consolidate these lots, as Mr. Shemeno was indicated, with permitted uses, which you've just heard. Contractor Flex Space, and it's something that the board obviously has some familiarity with. It's similar to his project in Lakewood, and I'd like to call it a more modernized version than what I think they used to call the West Commodore Business Park. I don't know if the sign's up there at all, but I believe a gentleman had referred to that previously. As you can see, there's still a lot of open space left on the site in green area. We're clearing only 46% of the site. There was, I believe, from Mr. Clea and also Mr. Peters' letter, a reference to your coverages. Your ordinance requires that we subtract the wetlands from the area in determining your, the compliance with your impervious and your building coverage. We will revise the plans and calculate this accurately, but we've done this, and I can testify tonight, that the building coverage is 9.3%, whereas your ordinance allows 30%. The impervious coverage is 23.4%, where your ordinance allows 75%. So as you can see, to be fair, a lot of this has to do with the wetlands and the buffers, but we are only developing a small portion of this property. There'll be five buildings. Your professionals have asked us to label them, and of course, we will for better identification. Each building is 33 feet deep, and as Mr. Roth indicated, they vary from four to 14 units for a total of 57,750 square feet. And there are proposed to be 35 units, up to 35 units. Some of them may be consolidated, as Mr. Werbler had indicated. And each building, each unit is 33 by 50 feet. Will be 200 square feet of office, 1,450 square feet of open space or warehouse. Will be fire suppressed, which means it'll be sprinkled. We're proposing a two-way ingress and egress on West Commodore Boulevard. No access at all to Wright DeBeau. That access, we've applied to the county, would be full movement both ways. It is a little unique, and we've kind of chosen to develop this to make it look a little bit nicer than just a warehouse, so it'll be a landscaped Boulevard entrance to the site, which will then taper down to a 25-foot two-way circulation throughout the site. We will provide this to your professionals to demonstrate it, but we have had up to a WB50 that can circulate the site as well as a pumper truck. We'll provide those templates to your professionals, but we have them internally, and I checked them before I came this evening. There'll be curb along the access drives and out on the radii on West Commodore Boulevard. There are not curb proposed in front of the buildings. It's an operational issue. It makes it to have easier access and allows the contractors' vehicles to be able to pull right into the building itself. We're not proposing curb or sidewalk along either road. On West Commodore Boulevard, the county did not request curbing, and we have experience with that with the other applications, so it is just pavement at this point. No curb is proposed, except for the radii, and no sidewalk proposed at this time. It's my professional opinion that without curb... On West Commodore Boulevard, the county did not request curbing, and we have experience with that with the other applications, so it is just pavement at this point, no curb is proposed, except for the radii, and no sidewalk proposed at this time. It's my professional opinion that without curb, it wouldn't be safe to have the sidewalk, understanding that your ordinance requires that a contribution be made in lieu. Wright DeBeau is a little bit different, if you see, there's a yellow line that kind of goes right to the corner there, that's the riparian buffer, we're really not permitted to put curb or sidewalk up there without some sort of a permit, I'm not even sure if it would be granted, so, again, we would propose not to have curb or sidewalk up there. I don't think there's any sidewalk in the area, there is curb on a portion of it, but would request that, that, the contribution may be made in lieu because of the environmental constraints. As has been testified, there's two designated parking spaces in front of each unit, along with a, a loading area which can also be used for parking, and the vehicle can actually be parked inside of the building as well. We also have 15 extra spaces interspersed throughout the site, which have handicap spaces as well as EV spaces, which are required by ADA as well as state requirements. Your ordinance requires a loading area for all of these types of, in the HC zone. We don't comply with the size of your loading, just because of the nature of the, the use, but each unit has its own loading space, which is the, right in front of the overhead door, so we would respectfully request relief technically from your ordinance from providing a loading area, just because we don't comply with the actual size of the loading area, I think it's a little bit larger, because it contemplates a, a larger truck. I think there was a, a question about the, the types of trucks and deliveries, it's, it's typical to have a box truck, which would comfortably fit in the space outside of the, of the overhead garage door. It is possible that a, a tractor trailer could be on site for, to drop off a pallet or something like that, and we've demonstrated that, that can circulate throughout the site. As far as grading, there'll be no riparian disturbance, will require a small amount of import, and we are aware of the requirements of your ordinance regarding certification of the import of the soil and its origin, and would comply with that. There are three shallow, approximately three foot deep infiltration basins, there's also a recharge area that discharges into the, into one of the infiltration basins, and all of these will discharge into the wetlands, respecting all buffers, and again, this will be reviewed by DEP as well. Landscaping and buffers, we comply with the width of the buffers required, several of your professionals have commented on the, the density of the plant material, and we certainly, as far as the landscape comments, would comply with the, what's being requested, and would work with your professionals to enhance the buffers, especially, I believe, against Lot 18 was a request, because that is a residential use adjacent to our property. As indicated, this would be serviced by public water and septic systems, each building would have its own small septic system, we've designed these before, and would condition this upon any approval from the Ocean County Health Department. And we did receive a letter from the MUA, we haven't applied for approval yet, but they have indicated that water is available for us. Site lighting throughout the site, I believe one of your professionals commented on the intensity, and that we, there were some areas that needed to be increased, we would do that and comply with your ordinance. There, there would also be house side shields where anything is near a, a residential area. Refuse was indicated, no outside storage of it, it's all done inside, and there's a small, there's a, a sign proposed to be in the front of the, of the entrance to the site, we'll comply with your ordinance, there, there was, I think, a comment in one of the letters that the height might be a little off, so we'll revise, the detail is on our plans, but we'll revise it to make sure that it complies with your ordinance, and I wouldn't want to ask for relief from that. I think that's it as far as the amenities of the site, we do require some relief that I could maybe touch on, as far as what your ordinance requires and what we're not quite measuring up to. One is that your ordinance requires that a letter of interpretation be obtained prior to submission, and, and the way that DEP's operating these days, that's a little impractical. So we have applied for the letter of interpretation, we actually did it last year, we're still waiting, as of this morning, they still haven't scheduled a site inspection, so we would certainly accept that as a condition of approval, if anything should change drastically impact the, the site layout, we'd, we'd be back to see you. As I'd indicated before, your ordinance requires a, a loading area of a certain size, we don't quite have the length that's required by your ordinance, but each unit has its own loading area. Sidewalk and curbing along the frontage, I think we, I discussed that, and would just request relief from providing it in lieu of making the contribution that's required. Your ordinance, I think, also requires a, a concrete apron, which we would add, and would not request relief from that. Curbing from parking areas, again, from operational standpoint, it's much better to keep this flat in front, and wheel stops are proposed, so we would request relief from the curbing just in front of the buildings. Parking along entrance aisles, just by the nature of the layout of this, it's something that we can't practically avoid. And then there's a nu, there's numerous buffer requirements, and I, I think we can comply with those, we just, we, we meet the width, we just need to add some additional plant mater, material to, to comply. There is one section of your ordinance that requires landscaping in the parking areas, and again, operationally for this type with contractors, it doesn't make a lot of sense. What we would offer is whatever plant material would be required, we just plant it elsewhere on the site, just not directly in the parking area. As far as outside agency approvals, we've applied for Ocean County soils, and that's pending, planning board as well. There, there were no real comments from the, the planning board, just that they want a 25-foot half width, which we would widen in front of the roadway frontage as required. Waiting for DEP, health department, we would apply for once we receive approval from, from you, and we would also apply to the MUA for water once we receive approval. That's correct, yes. That's, that's a great point, the, the only hesitation I have to that is that the, there's that riparian buffer out on Wright DeBeau, so I don't, I don't know that we have area to even sneak a, an emergency access out there, without encroaching on that buffer. Well, I'm not a firefighter, I think you may have one, on, on, on the board, but I would suggest, I would, I would suggest that in, and, I don't want to be so bold to say this, but i- in an emergency, that there could be access provided from those commercial, either through Jerry's or the other, the other site, the warehouse.
Doesn't work that way.
I think it's pretty-
It doesn't work that way.
Tremor, Tremor, can you, can you take this?
No, I have that all here, I mean, it's, this, this building has a metal roof, that's why you're sprinkling it, is it truss, inside metal truss, or just a steel frame?
That would be for the architect, it's outside mine.
Okay, so it has no fire rating? Okay, so now with that in mind, you need full access in the back, is there a, a back door in these units?
I'm sorry, Chair, he should be on the record with the microphone.
According to the building code, there's only one ingress and egress entry door, aside from the garage door that's in each unit.
So that's an interesting concept, if we have to get emergency access to the back, let's say we have this situation, I mean, like Mr. Bressi said, how are we going to get around the building with equipment?
I don't, I don't know that there's space to get behind, even just practically speaking.
How, how many feet from the property line are you?
Mr. Peters, do we have a, a traffic, a fire safety letter on this? I have the traffic, I, I don't, I don't think I have the fire yet.
Has fire even looked at this? Mr. Shea, we have a fire memo from December of last year, that's the last one I've seen.
December of last year, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, have the plans changed since then?
So, no, the plans haven't changed, we would comply with their letter, we have no problem complying with their letter, and it looks smaller on, on TV, but it's, it's actually 45 feet.
Correct. My partner here knew that. So you can get a fire truck back there or emergency vehicles, I mean, it's, we're kind of like trying to shape things and, you know, it's not fair to everybody else if we let you slide, we need access. Is there curbs in the parking lot?
There are curbs in the access aisles, yes.
Right, so where it comes around the building, so now you, you have fire trucks trying to jump curbs and get yourself set up, I mean, I, I would respectfully request that you get an easement or something, and at least put an emergency access gate on the other end, because basically one lane in, one laid out, you have a panic situation, or let's say, one of you, you've got a tractor trailer that's stuck there, and it's on fire next to the building, what are you going to do? You know, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of sketchy the way it's put together right now, I don't, I don't see how-
So with the, and, again, respectfully, so it's 50 feet deep, would, would it be realistic that if they had access to the front, that there would be a reason to go to the, to the back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a-
How about, how about grass pavers? Would that be something to consider?
Grass pavers are an interesting concept, the problem is, most of them when they do the grass pavers, will give us only a two, two, two to three foot wide runways. You're putting a 40, 50-foot piece apparatus, you need a 20-foot solid area that's with compacted soil, that's going to be cert, verified and certified that it can hold up to 70,000 or 80,000 pounds, because when the jacks go out-
For support jacks.
Yeah, so, there's a lot involved here, and, yes, you're going to put sprinklers in there, it makes a big difference, if they work. You know, you could have a situation where the fire starts in the utility room, the back corner, gets above the sprinklers and compromises them, then we make the Channel 12 news.
So I, I do, if it would help, I, I do believe we have up to four, I think the, the fire department's letter requested a, a fourth hydrant, so there are four hydrants throughout the, the site as well.
There'll probably, Mr. O'Brien wanted that, which is a great idea, I have no, more hydrants is better, trust me, that, that's a great thing, but the hydrant doesn't do any good if you don't have access. They, if, let's say you have a large volume of fire, you may have to go around the back of the building, being it's a metal prefab, and cut some holes and operate in there to knock it down to try and save the rest of the building. So access is important, from the firefighting standpoint.
Do you have a traffic circulation plan?
I do have it, yeah, I could hand out an exhibit, is there a question about it? Because I, I can testify that we, we comply.
So would you be amendable to amending that to include circulation around the buildings for the fire safety vehicles? So I, I think, so-
I don't, yeah, I don't know that, I, I can't-
We, we have a precedence that we've kind of set at the board in that, and it's, it's really kind of being driven by the, the fire department, so to speak, where we're requiring as much as humanly possible, at least circular access to the building in the event of a fire. So we, we have a situation here where the lot is very weirdly proportioned, and, and we have a lot of volume on some pretty narrow property ways, angles, whatever you want to call it, and both the, the traffic safety report and the fire report question whether or not the fire trucks are going to have access to the entirety of the building, so we're kind of chasing our own tail at this point, so if the applicant would be amendable to creating a situation in which the fire trucks, you know, emergency vehicles would have access to the entirety of the buildings, that would kind of go a long way.
I, I hear you, I can't, I, I can't, I can say can look at it, that's all I can say, I have encountered this situation before, and quite frankly, the, the, the fire department accepted that the, the, the buildings were suppressed, and that satisfied their concerns in other situations.
Is there a possibility of putting a gated emergency access onto Wright DeBeau? So that, the fire department could crash through something, but people could not use it as an entrance or exit, just for emergency purposes? Is that a possibility?
It's, yes, I, I think it is, I'd have to look-
That's what we're asking for, if you give a second entrance up there, that we can get in from the other end totally, that helps a lot.
Only emergency, only emergency.
Emergency exit, not for regular, your landscapers, just for the emergency vehicles can get in, a gated, whatever you have to put so the fire truck can be held there, and they can come in from that end too.
That's what you said, they have to get an easement, so-
There's enough of a, an area there, I think, to get, if they move that pond over at that-
So yeah, I, I, moving the pond is something that I, I think we could do, I think we can make that work, I still have that problem with the riparian buffer in the upper corner, it, it literally touches the corner of that property, so it wouldn't be exiting on our property.
Well, it's, it's not a normal entrance exit, it would simply, you may never use it, but hopefully-
How about we go one step further, you mentioned Jerry's Auto Body's abutting it, get an easement from Jerry to go through his property. So now, if you paved alongside of these buildings, instead of having curbs, trucks could get there, and like Dr. Campbell said, you do some, a 20-foot grass paver in the back, kind of with the emergency access, you kind of alleviated your own problem, very simply.
I, I recognize that the board is, is trying to help us here, and I don't want to seem resistant to it, I just want to make sure that my client doesn't get held up by, by a neighbor for an easement, and-
Well, you're kind of held up looking for a secondary egress, which-
Yeah, no, 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 I, I, no, I, I hear you, I hear you, I'm just, I'm just telling you, that's the reason why I'm not saying, yeah, no problem, because-
Is your client, is your client here?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think we may be helping you or not, but I think we're trying to tell you, we want the second emergency exit in.
I, I, I hear you.
Did you get that hint?
Yes, 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 sir. I'm just trying to figure out how to get it, so I, I don't want to commit to one way or the other, if, if the board were comfortable, we could certainly, I think, I haven't been kicked yet, accept that we would obtain a second means of, of, of egress and, and ingress, and, and try to work that out with your professionals, that it would be acceptable.
We're going to ask you to, we're going to ask you to do something anyway, so you know you're going to have to come back anyway, so we might as well clear up all our little eventualities, like, you know, I know we want to see something architecturally more interesting done with that one, especially that one building that faces Commodore. So, you know, there, there are two things that we want to see, we want to see something more interesting architecturally on the, especially one building that faces Commodore, and we want to see a safer environment, and I know the people at Jerry's Auto Body, they have nothing back there but stuff, you know, I'll bet you could, you know, make a little deal with them for, and that might help them as well, you know, it couldn't hurt, so that might work well.
I appreciate that, and usually in these types of situations, I, I'd, I'd want to meet with somebody, so, we, we kind of have a letter from the fire department that doesn't, should we, should we go to them? Because it's not in their letter.
No, it's ours.
Right, so, so should, Mr. Clea and Mr. Peters?
So why don't we, before the next meeting, we can set up a professional-
T R C?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before-
And just for the record, we are not saying that you haven't met your obligation. The Fire Department gave that to you. That's fine. That's the Fire Department. We respect that a hundred percent and we must comply with that. We must, we must take it as a, as a ruling. However, this board wants a second access.
I got you, I got you.
Circulation of the fire trucks, though, around the entirety of the building is on, is in the onsite section of the traffic safety unit report, just to be clear.
Yes.
And I, I honestly don't have the Fire Department review letter in front of me right now, so I don't know.
I'm sure if you present what we just said to Mr. O'Brien, the inspector, you will have no problem agreeing with that.
Okay. And to, and to make it clear, we're not doing this to make your life more difficult, but we will always put the safety of this town and the community and your property before anything else.
You're a very unique-
Understood.
Unique piece of property here, uniquely shaped.
So if you don't mind me just clarifying, are we, are, are we, is the board looking for, obviously, a second means of access, right? That's, that's clear as a bell. Now this, in light of the fact that it's suppressed and we do have the second means of access, are we also looking for full circulation around the building?
Correct.
Okay.
But it'd be an easier situation where we can bring it down to what Dr. Campbell said, a grass paver back there. And then if you pave up to the side of the buildings, it gives us options as responders to come in. I mean, think about this. Here's a scenario. You have somebody, for some reason goes on the roof of the building, falls off in the back, all the way in that far corner. You need to get an ambulance back there to get him out, correct? That's what we're looking for. Easy access to get emergency vehicles at any point of your building where somebody might have got hurt, a landscaper, anybody.
No, I, I understand. I'm trying to, the wheels are spinning in my head to try to comply with what you are asking for. I understand what you're asking for. I'm just trying to figure out how to do it. Let's figure it out. That's what I get paid to do.
I'm sure once your professional mind leaves this building, it will start spinning and good things will happen.
Thank you for your confidence, Madam Chair.
It's not that we're picking on anybody either.
I understand.
This has kind of been something that's, I, I've kind of brought a little bit of light to, that's been overlooked for a very long time and has been an issue, because I've been a responder for many years. And we're just trying to improve the quality of services. We have some really good police fire EMS out there. We want to give them the best opportunity, do what they can and make it easy for them, because their safety is more important than anything.
I agree.
And to let you know, we have a great deal of respect for the professionals that come before this board and believe that you can accomplish these goals.
We'll figure it out.
You'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think you'll figure it out and I think I've seen you for, I don't want maybe twenty, thirty years in front of us. Not all of them. And we've asked for stuff like this over that twenty and thirty years and we just want to see you back in place.
Yep, thank you.
Now, let me make it clear, since your architect is from Chicago, we don't need to see the architect again. We just need to see some kind of-
Just something that's aesthetically pleasing.
Something more aesthetically pleasing, especially for the building facing the road.
We can certainly do that and we appreciate that, so we don't have to drag him back and forth.
He doesn't have to come back.
Thank you for that. I presume you will subject him to the public, though?
We will. That's why we're gonna wait for you to finish what you're gonna finish and then we'll be opening it to the public.
Chair, just a simple analogy, like suit and tie, suit and tie, suit and tie. It's not that a sweatshirt doesn't fold nice and come in clean, but you're not here in sweatpants. You're here in a suit and tie. There's a way to make something that's fairly straightforward attractive in your own field and the architect knows precisely how to do it. I recall the developments up in North Arlington, McDonald's wanted to come in. They wanted to put it in consistent with the neighborhood that they thought was a little tired looking. So they wanted to put a tired looking McDonald's in there. And I said, you're gonna put the one that's in Shrewsbury, which costs about a million five more, but it was a gorgeous, their most current McDonald's. Beautiful. So I'm just giving you food for thought that, folks, yeah, it's, it's just, you're not here in sweatpants, even though they can be clean and fold nice. Sweatpants, suit, tie, clean, nice. And so I, I'm not sure who lives near there. I'm not sure what it's backing. That one building is quite long, so I'm not oriented to what it looks like, but-
That's Jerry's Auto Body.
And there may be things that are not required under municipal land use law. They may just be required under what good business practice would be. And if it's representing you in suit, white shirt, red tie, what might that look like there? Because it's a representation of the owner. How that building looks is how the owner looks. That's what I'm trying to represent on you.
Put it, I'll, I'll be less gentle. So we see a lot of warehouses, as all of you in this room know. And this is the ugliest one that I've seen since doing this. So I think the applicant needs to spend some time sprucing this up a little bit to make it more aesthetically appealing.
Thank you, well said.
Your, your message is clearly understood and we'll be back to you with revised architecture.
Thank you.
Do you have another, any other?
We do not. Those are, those are our four witnesses.
We'd like to open it to the public.
My apologies and my apologies to Scott Kennel. We do have-
Oh, sorry.
It's getting late. I'm getting old.
Long day.
Our last witness is Scott Kennel, our traffic engineer.
Scott, sorry, Scott, I saw you in the back of the room.
He just likes hiding back there.
Yeah, I don't blame him.
All right, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Scott Kennel, K E N N E L, with McDonnell and Ray Associates, located at fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan.
Oh, I think we've seen you before, so-
And board would accept your credentials.
Happy to have you.
Thank you. So my office prepared a traffic study dated December eighth, twenty twenty-three for the proposed development. And as part of that analysis, we utilized traffic counts that were conducted adjacent to the site in June of twenty twenty-two and as well as December of twenty twenty-three. I'm sure as the board knows, we do quite a few studies along this, this locations, this corridor, so we have a wealth of information. With the existing traffic counts established as a base, we then projected out to a design year consistent with the Ocean County Planning Board requirement, which puts us out to twenty thirty-three. And we use the growth rates established by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. We also included site-specific traffic from eight other developments along this section of West Commodore and included that in our analysis. As far as this type of use, we projected it to generate approximately forty-two peak hour trips in the morning and forty-eight trips in the afternoon. And based on a review of traffic patterns in the area, we expect traffic to arrive and depart fifty percent to and from the east and fifty percent to and from the west. Analyzing the future traffic conditions with the traffic growth in the eight other developments and site-specific traffic from this development, we determined that the site access out to West Commodore operate at good levels of service. We're expecting a level service B. I've testified previously that the target range is usually level service C to D, or much better than that, with the average vehicle delay of fourteen seconds leaving the site onto West Commodore. So well within acceptable ranges. There's been plenty of testimony regarding the site layout. And based on my review of the site layout, it's been designed to accommodate large wheel-based vehicles throughout the site to access the individual buildings. And we're providing parking in excess of the ordinance. So it was, and as far as it relates to site access, the one other key issue is available site distance or sight lines. We have an excess of six hundred feet east and west, which exceeds the recommended standard. So based on the design proposed, the existing conditions and the level service, it's my opinion that the site access can operate safely and efficiently. That's basically it in a nutshell. I know it's, trying to keep it quick.
Sounds good.
Wish everybody had level service B.
Any questions from the board, from our esteemed gentlemen? All right.
Thank you.
Now may we open it to-
Now we've completed our testimony, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, just, just, just two quick ones, maybe three, for, for Walt. On Wright-DeBow Road, there's like a thirteen and a half foot jog in the right of way?
Yes, we will make that dedication.
Okay, fine. And I, I can understand the, the conflict with the riparian buffer and trying to provide emergency access from right to bow. But I would think there'd be something in the D E P regulations that would permit or allow encroachments. And if we have the public safety, you know, health and welfare as one of the reasons, I think, you know, the Wright-DeBow Road, even with the riparian buffer, is doable.
It's something I'll definitely look into.
And we know, we know we don't have curb in front of the units themselves, but is the perimeter of the whole site, does that have curb?
Yes.
Okay, fine. And are we consolidating or not? I think Ron, you would ask for a waiver and that we-
No, no, we're requesting the consolidation. We'd like to make the two lots into one.
Okay, fine. All right, thank you.
All right, let's open it to the public. Anyone who has anything to ask any of the professionals regarding their testimony. You may come forward now.
Seeing no one come forward, I move the clause to public cross-examination.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now anyone who has anything to say, any questions to ask about this particular application?
Seeing no one come forward, I move the clause to public portion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, would you like to sum up for us then?
Just to be, just to be clear, just to be clear, so this is only as to the testimonies for tonight. The applicant will be coming back to, for the additional requests that the board made and will be waiving time of decision, correct?
That is correct.
Do we have a date, Ms. Morrison?
Our next available date, let's see, September twenty-third.
Nothing before that. Because it's only really two or three little things. We hope.
Just a few, this is a few.
They're just a few little tweaks that we're looking for here.
No, there's-
That's all right.
All the applications are really large and we had two and three on every, I mean, we can put it, but we might not get to it.
There were a date that came open, I would be willing to renotice if we can announce tonight, the September twenty-third. But if the board and the board secretary would just keep us in mind, we'd appreciate that.
We have Grotown Estates on July fifteenth. It's a large one, but I mean, it's the only thing, if you wanted to try to fit it in.
Why don't we put you on first and get them, yeah, because they wouldn't take us long, July fifteenth? July fifteenth. So how about July fifteenth? You'll be the first on, but you have to promise that you will have all your business in ducks in a row there.
We, we will, we will do so.
So that way we can, you know, finalize this and it's a much better date.
We appreciate that. And there'll be no further notice, is that correct?
No further notice. It's, it's only six weeks away. So we need a motion to change the date, please.
I'll make a motion and move it to July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Uh, second, Sullivan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty.
Thanks, Ron.
All right, block twenty-one, five oh two lots, one, two, three, and four, Maplehurst Avenue Warehouse, Mr. Pfeffer. Nice suit, Mr. Pfeffer.
He's a very classy guy.
Well, it's, we've trained him well.
Good evening, everybody. This is one of those small items that we're coming back for, hopefully, so we should hopefully be fairly quick as it's getting late in the evening. The last time we were, Adam Pfeffer, turn on behalf of the applicant. The last time we were here, we presented all of our planning and engineering testimony. Just to, to remind the board, we are, we are in the industrial zone. We are proposing a warehouse, approximately thirty thousand seven hundred forty-two square feet of warehouse with one thousand three hundred fifty-eight square feet of office. As the board may recall, the site is, is, is particular in terms of that we front on three streets, Maplehurst Avenue off of White and then there's a Paper Street, Cedar, I think it's, Cedar, Cedarhurst, thank you. And at the time, the board had some concerns, the notes I had taken from, from that meeting. One was as to the building height in the industrial zone. Industrial buildings can go up to fifty feet. The board had some concerns that that's really gonna, even though it's in, it is in the industrial zone, there are some residential houses in the area. We did go back and we are able to reduce, and you'll hear testimony, we are able to reduce that with no issue. Additionally, the board had some concern that Maplehurst Avenue is not a full big boy street, as we'll call it. And the board had asked us to go back and speak with the township to see what, if anything, they have planned for it. So I have Brian Murphy here. Brian Murphy did have an opportunity to speak both with the town engineer, with the town council's attorney, further conversations with Mr. Clea. And we, I think we did come up with a resolution that we think the board, we're hopeful that the board will be helpful, will be in favor of. If I can have Mr. Murphy come back up, have him re sworn in and he'll talk about the particulars of what we're proposing on the road.
All right, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please.
Brian Murphy, M U R P H Y, eighteen fifty-six Route Nine in Tom's River, and Principal of F W H Associates.
All right, the board accepts your credentials.
Board accepts, thank you.
Thank you. So we, we met with the town engineer as requested to see if there's any, anything on the books or any feasibility of improving the section of Bellevue that would run from the intersection with Maplehurst to White Street. And also obviously this section of Maplehurst along our frontage. There's nothing planned currently. The board, or the county town attorney also weighed in that there's nothing looking to do anything currently in that area. I've expressed that with Mr. Clea after we found that information. And what we had discussed is possibly rather than, let's say, get more bang for your buck, so to speak, to do the improvements from Bellevue, for the section of Bellevue, from White down to Maplehurst and then along our frontage of Maplehurst, to widen that out to a full twenty-eight feet in lieu of not doing the improvements along the remainder of Bellevue and the improvements for Cedarhurst, which runs around our south side, which is Paper Street. And we wouldn't be doing curbs and sidewalks on any of those areas. We provided basic cost estimates to Mr. Clea to kind of see how that, this all jives. Obviously, my client was very interested in those numbers as well and they're coming out pretty evenly. So that's what we would ask for a waiver from doing that work or paying into the funds for those surrounding roads and, and instead do the improvements on that section of Bellevue from White to Maplehurst and then do the section of Maplehurst along our frontage. Again, it would just be widening the pavement, not doing curb and sidewalk and obviously any storm order that would be associated with that.
That sounds good. Any comments from the board? I hope the goats across the street appreciate the work. I visited them today. They're really cute. I do, I do like the way you've done that with the street. It's a, it's a really tight, tight location.
It is tight. It is tight.
And it's the middle of a neighborhood, for goodness sakes.
... Well, the applicant's say, and the town, you get the full...
Yes, I think it will be much, much improved.
Thank you for working with the town, and I hope, as you can see, that these improvements are not only good for the town, but I think also good for your business. Agreed. And, uh, it's good to see when we can all work together to make something better. And thank you for working with us.
I love kumbaya's.
A pleasure.
Mr. Clea?
Um, just, so, um, finalized construction plans will be provided for the road improvements that you're, that you're proposing. Um, and, uh, on Bellevue, um, I'll say the southern end, but you'd still, but you would still need that access driveway off of, off of Bellevue, Bellevue.
Yeah, we, we would look to do that basically as a, as a driveway rather than a full road, uh, because it's, it's a 20, it's a full 28-foot road along this area. So we propose basically just provide a, provide an access driveway up there.
Again, looking for, looking for, like I say, bang for the buck, um, sidewalk in this area, um, ordinance requires it, um, but maybe, uh, the board would, um, consider it, waiving sidewalk in there and taking that money and putting it into the road improvements from, um, to Bellevue from White to the site.
Yes, that sounds reasonable. Does that sound reasonable to you? Everybody else think that sounds reasonable and practical?
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all.
Mr. Peters? Anything from you? You're good to go?
Yes.
Let's just list out, now that things have changed a little bit, let's just list out the waivers that we're looking for, uh, so the record's clear.
Sure. Uh, we're looking for a waiver from providing curb and sidewalk and road improvements along Cedar, our frontage with Cedarhurst, which is the, the paper street to our south. A waiver from providing curb and sidewalk along Maplehurst frontage, but we would be, be widening the roadway on, on both sides. And curb and sidewalk along our frontage with Bellevue. And again, we would be looking to go with probably a 14-foot wide aisle there, and we can make that one way if, if desired, um, just to, uh, get traffic in and out.
Good. And it's, it's giving us what we've been looking for and discussing for so long, to uh, access and egress. So that's, that's very good.
So the board is amendable to the one-way that he was just referring to?
Make it one-way.
I mean, or, or I can come out the 20 and keep it, keep that two-way, so none of the tractor trailers come down Maplehurst.
But we, we don't want to encourage using that really as a, you don't want to encourage using that as a two-way entrance and egress. I think one-way is sufficient. It, it provides what we're looking for, and that's a safe egress.
Fair enough.
Correct? All agree? Okay. That give you what you need?
That gives me what I need.
Anything you'd like to wrap up for us there, since you've hung on here all night long?
And I guess, just to get on, again, on the record, but, so we would be widening Maplehurst and, and the Bellevue section from White Road down to our intersection.
Happy day. I was down that road again today.
Yeah, it is tight. So, so we'd go, we'd go out with no curbs and sidewalks there either, but we would do storm order, obviously, because we'd be required to.
We, we probably need to open it for public? It's something else, Mr....
Just one other item. Um, we do have, we did submit a traffic impact analysis. We don't, we don't need, I believe, to put testimony on, just want to make sure it's into the record.
Heard.
Uh, and it only improves with all the improvements that we're making, so.
I would...
And Mr. Kennel loves to get up, but we're happy to, just to mark the, mark the, uh, report, it's in, it's in the record, um, and that's fine.
Good.
With that, you could...
All right. Anyone from the public who would like to, uh, address this, um, application? Please come forward.
Seeing no one come forward, I close the cross-examination.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So let's, well, how about a finish of comments?
We were stipulating to all...
We gotta do public first, and then...
I thought we just did...
We just did cross-examination.